Six o'clock and we're going to bring this meeting to order. If I can get everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
Yeah, ma'am, we have one change that I would request to move the closed session, item nine point five, to right after. We need to do citizens comments before that. So I would say, can we, can we do citizens comments, do nine point five, and then we'll come back for two?
Absolutely. Any other changes?
No, mayor.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with slight changes.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? None? And we also have the special meeting running concurrent, which will put item number five point one onto the consent calendar and we'll move that to item number. Yeah, five point one. Yeah, we're going to move it to five point one five. You want to do the awards presentation, so we want to do that later?
Later, after, after we come back.
Okay, so we're going to move to citizens comments. This section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the city council on any item within the jurisdiction of the council. Members of the public, when recognized by the mayor, should come forward to the lectern, identify themselves, and use the microphone. Comments are normally limited to three minutes. In accordance with state open meeting laws, no action will be taken by the city council this evening and all items will refer to staff for follow-up and report. Citizen comments submitted in writing to the city clerk by 5:00 PM on the day of the city council meeting shall be distributed to the city council and included in the record, however they will not be read. Do we have any citizen comments? Seeing none, we're going to move into closed session. Do we expect to be reporting out?
Possibly.
All right. We shall be back shortly.
I appreciate everyone's patience. We are going to resume, it looks like it is 6:34, and we'll resume the meeting. And we are going to move on to item number 2.1, awards presentations, appointments, and proclamations. Presentation of Westlands Water District 2025 West Side Scholarship Awards.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jason Mendez. I'm with Westlands Water District. I'm the Public Affairs Representative. And just wanted to thank you guys for your time to have us here. This is our 19th year giving out $1,000 scholarships to all the high schools that are either within the district or in the surrounding areas of the district. And this year, we had three winners from Kalinga, Kalinga High. And we have one winner here with us tonight. The other winner, or the other two winners, she lives in Huron, so we honored her at the Huron City Council meeting. And the other student is at a summer camp right now, working. So she wasn't able to attend. But just wanted to talk a little bit about the student that we have here this evening, Samantha. And I'm going to read a couple of little excerpts from her essay. And all of the essays were good, but hers just absolutely stood out. And it kind of was a little close to my heart because of the way that she got into agriculture. So when she was a freshman in high school, she wasn't sure about her getting into ag. She was kind of like a little hesitant about it, but as she's proven to all of us, she's going to be making a career out of it. She'll be attending Kansas State University in the fall. And just some of her accomplishments, let me just go through. She, at the Fresno Fair show, she was a team leader, and she reestablished Kalinga's FFA presence at the big Fresno Fair after a five-year absence. And then she went on to organize tours in Washington DC where she met with Congressman John Duarte's office to talk about agricultural policies. And also through FFA, she's also the winner of the National FFA Scholarship Award. I think she was even on, mentioned in Channel 30 Action News. I think they came and talked to you about that. So it felt really good, like we had already awarded her scholarship, and then we see that, and we're like, no, this is awesome. So without further ado, I would like to present Samantha Sellers with a couple of certificates. We have a certificate here from Adam Gray, member of Congress. We have another certificate here from Assemblywoman Esmeralda Soria. And then another certificate here from Senator Anna Cabarejo. So, and of course, most importantly, I do have your Westlands check, your scholarship check, which is why you're here. So congratulations. And I don't know, did you get, I'm going to give one to you anyway. I know the first year of college can be a little tricky, be a little hard. So we wanted to give you, this is Wesley, our mascot. He's a little stress ball. And just those nights when, you know, classes can be a little overwhelming sometimes, or it'd be a little hard. So when you need to give a little squeeze, just remember that people back here at Westlands, we've got your back. All right? Here we go. And if it's okay, I'd like to take pictures of Samantha, her parents are here tonight. Let's give a round of applause to them as well, too, for raising such a great, great student representing the community of Kalinga. And I'd like to get pictures with the council if that's okay.
Yep, let's do it.
I will add that Samantha does want to get into communications and kind of doing what I'm doing is public affairs. So maybe this might be the spark that will get you into it.
So before you leave, I would just like to say that your name has been all over the Valley. It's been all over the state. And you have made Kalinga proud. You've made your parents proud. I have gotten calls from multiple Congress, senators, and people of that nature asking me questions about you. I think you probably met with Ms. Macedo's office and the rest of the folks, and maybe Soria, too. So I just want to say that everyone here is very proud of you. And you're a shining star for the Valley. And we appreciate everything you do, and good luck wherever you may go. Thank you so much. Good job. All right. We are going to move on to item number 2.3, Proclamation of National Night Out. Mid Valley Disposal Quarterly Update.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, council members, city staff, Isaac Kulikoff, District Manager, Mid Valley Disposal, for a Q1, Q2 update on just kind of some things going on with recycling and operations. It's good to get in front of council and get in front of the city and just communicate some information to you guys so that the community is up to speed and to be able to answer any questions. I'm going to have Thomas Hammond. He is our Recycling Programs Manager for the entire South Valley. Does a lot of work for us and our communities. Start it off, and then I'll wrap some things up. So thank you.
Good evening, council and staff. Thanks for having us again. We can go to the first slide, Mercedes. So we're just going to go over a few things, some site assessments, some audits that we've conducted, some education given out, some events, a little cow recycle update, and then I'll pass it back over to Isaac for some operational reports. So site assessment's done, year-to-date. When we go out to do site assessments, again, we look for implementation, compliance. We're always giving out education. We're looking for illegal dumping and any kind of bulky items that we may find. Year-to-date, we've done 88 commercial businesses in town, 20 multifamilies, and 204 residential homes, giving a total of about 312 generators that have been visited this year-to-date. We're continuing to work on the commercial businesses in Q3 and Q4 to get almost, if not all, the businesses completed within this year. Go to the next one. Recycling audits, these are contamination tags that are left by drivers when they see contamination inside of the bin or the cart. As you can see, residential, we've had 37 tags, commercial 15, for a total of 52. I would tell you that is a very, very low number for the first Q1 and Q2. You guys are doing a really good job. I think that the education that we're providing is really taking hold, and people are really trying to do the right thing. You can go to the next one. So just as a brief summary of the education that we've given out year-to-date, the first one is one that goes out to the entire city. It's a compliance aspect of 1383 recycling guide we mail out to anybody that has contamination. We also have it at the events. The instructional service got on the fire, was also mailed out, just kind of instructional how-tos on where to put your cart, when to start, and some holiday schedules, so. Events, we love to attend events, and we attended the Horn Toad Derby again this year. Sadly, our horn-toad dump truck did not win, but we enjoyed it and had a really great time out there regardless. We love meeting with the people. That's Jennifer Romero, that's your local recycle coordinator. And then we also look forward to being a part of the National Night Out, which I know you guys have an agenda coming up, but we plan on supplying pencils to all the students in bundles of five. So that's a, we've done that for the last three or four years, and we really love the event. So we look forward to doing that here coming up. Last but not least, just a small cow recycle update. Not much has gone on. You guys are in really good standings with cow recycle, so they don't really bug you guys all that often. But we did have our annual conference call with Mercedes where they talked about reporting and record-keeping, some commercial edible food recovery, some procurement, and then a site visit that's going to be done this fall, I believe. You know, Mercedes has done an excellent job with the reporting and the record-keeping and the commercial edible food recovery. There are a few things that Mid Valley does not do for the jurisdiction, and those things are some of them. But Mercedes has done a very good job, and she's been really on top of making sure that the city is compliant with all the things that it needs to be doing. So kudos to Mercedes and staff. Last but not least, the electronic annual report was completed. Its submission is due August 1st. I wait until July 31st just to make sure that the jurisdiction doesn't have any information they want to add at the last minute, but we are already good to go to get that turned in. And so with that, I will hand it back off to Isaac. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Thomas. Cleanup events. This was from our, was this our fall or spring cleanup? I think this is spring cleanup. So the most recent cleanup here at our facility in town, 12 total loads. That's the number of roll-off loads or packer trucks that we fill. So the most recent cleanup here at our facility in town, 12 total loads. That's that's the number of roll-off loads or packer trucks that we fill. 372 customers, 400, 400 and a half tons of mattresses, 75 pounds of tires, 376 pounds of e-waste, which is a lot of e-waste, 53.6 tons of refuse metal, close to 20 tons. Thirty, 32% of that is diverted, not taken to landfill. So it's all goes to appropriate recycling facilities internally on our end. We've got the next cleanup for the fall. It's typically in November, kind of before Veterans Day. We're working on scheduling that date. As always, we've got, we've got some lunch out there for people who participate. Hot dog chips and a soda as they come through for them and their families. It's always a great event. I think we'll have some compost out there as well for for residents to pick up. You can go to the next slide, please. Year-to-date tonnage report, so Q1, Q2, close to 1,200 tons of commercial trash were picked up, 176 tons of recycling, 136 tons of organics and with a total diversion rate of 22%. So great job on those commercial numbers and commercial businesses. Residential refuse 1322, recycling 330, organics 585, which is a nice number. So 41% total diversion across the board for residential. That's a a big hand to to the residents and but Thomas and his team going out there and tagging cans and talking to customers and you know, just keeping people updated. It's staff changes and comes and goes and businesses. And people forget at their homes, if your kid's taking out the trash, sometimes they just tuck it into the first can they see. And so keeping people educated in schools and businesses is is important. Do we have another slide here? It says thank you. So I'm here to answer any questions, anything at all about anything upcoming or any issues. I did want to introduce Frank Chavez. Frank's sitting right here. He's he's the new route supervisor for the Westside Division. Julian Castillo is still part of the operation, but he plays a little bit different role these days. I think he's getting ready to retire and maybe maybe he doesn't think so, but soon enough, right? And so he played a little bit different role, but he's still heavily involved in the community and the operation. But Frank Chavez is the dedicated route supervisor out here. And then my counterpart or actually my operations manager Alfredo Alvarez, I think you met at the last council meeting, he gave a report. He's also not here tonight. It's his wife's birthday, so I gave him the night off. But I'm here to answer any questions to anybody.
Council have any questions? I just had one question. Do you guys know of any like upcoming? I know there's always changing things at the state level. Are there any things that are changing that are coming soon, like with organic waste or any things like that that might be add-ons that you can foresee or?
I hope not, Mr. Mayor. I hope not.
Me too.
Not not to my knowledge currently. So hopefully we're at where we're at with with what the state requires municipalities to do. Getting through 1383 was challenging enough. Like Thomas said, the community is doing a fantastic job and we appreciate that. So I don't see anything in the near horizon.
What about the the clean fleet vehicles? Are you guys gonna be having to do that or no?
We're not necessarily going to have to do it. We still have a couple on order. Certain jurisdictions maybe may require it. But but currently it's it's been it's been municipalities are required to, but private businesses are not. So it's kind of on pause right now.
Cool, thank you.
I did want to give a shout out to Chief and his team. We had a hot load about two months ago, I want to say, month and a half. A hot load is when something's inside that packer truck that combusts. Typically these days, it's it's a lithium ion battery, vape pens, things of that nature. Sometimes out in the county, it's sulfur or fertilizer that gets thrown in there. We just had one out in Kermin area two days ago. And this this thing's like a giant accordion and if you get a little bit of fire in there, it gets hot real quick. No matter what you try to do, close the hopper, smash it back, it combusts quickly. But the chief and his team were Johnny on the spot with the ammo and we really appreciate that, getting that thing out. We got it cleaned up really good. It happens, right? And so having those contingency plans and having the support from the city and and the chief's staff was was top-notch. We appreciate it.
Any other questions? No? Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, you guys. Good to see you all.
Good to see you. Alright, now we are gonna move on to the proclamation of National Night Out. And for everyone watching, I apologize, new device here, still learning it. So but I'm gonna read this and then I'm gonna head down and we'll take a picture. Proclamation by the mayor of the City of Kalinga, National Night Out, whereas the National Association of Town Watch, NATW, sponsors a national community building campaign on Tuesday, August 5th, 2025, the state of Texas. Is that legit? Okay, the state of Texas and select areas celebrate Tuesday, October 7th, entitled National Night Out. And whereas the National Night Out campaign provides an opportunity for neighbors in the City of Kalinga join over 38 million neighbors across 17,000 communities from all 50 states, US territories and military bases worldwide. And whereas National Night Out is an annual community building campaign that promotes strong police community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie to make our neighborhoods safer, more caring, places to live, work. And whereas neighbors in the City of Kalinga assist the local law enforcement agency through joint community building efforts and support National Night Out of 2025. And whereas it is essential that all neighbors of the City of Kalinga come together with police and work together to build a safer, more caring community. And now therefore, by the mayor and the city council, we do hereby call upon our neighbors of the City of Kalinga to join us and National Association of Town Watch in support of the National Night Out on Tuesday, August 5th, 2025. The state of Texas and select areas celebrate Tuesday, October 2025. And be it further resolved that we do hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 5th, 2025, the state of Texas and select areas celebrate Tuesday, October 7th, 2025, as National Night Out in the City of Kalinga. In witness hereof, I have set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Kalinga to be affixed this 17th day of July, 2025. And I'm gonna present this to Mr. Young. Alright, number four, department updates.
Thank you, Mayor. So just update council on some fire department issues and things of going on, events and stuff. First up is kind of a personnel update. We only have one vacancy right now. It's a firefighter paramedic and we're actively recruiting. After council's approval of the per diem position a while back, we were able to hire six EMTs and six paramedics. So the new recruitment rates and the new recruitment of using governmentjobs.com really helped with our recruit recruitment. So I've already got five applicants for the firefighter paramedic where we had zero last time. So really happy with that. And then we are gonna have two non-safety EMTs completing paramedic school on August 8th. And they'll be added to the non-safety full-time positions. They have a couple more hurdles to get through with their national registry and stuff like that and Fresno County accreditation. But we should have two more promotions to paramedic here in the next month or so. Apparatus update, the new ambulance is still on track for September delivery. July 1st, I signed the PO for the brand-new engine, council approved with the budget and the 500-day clock has started. And then we are a few weeks away from receiving the chassis for the first of two ambulance remounts. Fourth of July update, we upstaffed a two-man crew on the patrol and a two and a three-man crew on the engine and added an extra battalion chief. We were, we responded to three vegetation fires caused by illegal fireworks and we wrote eight citations that night. I will say the community made a lot of comments to us about the signs that we put out over on Polk and over on Elm about the warning for the citations. It was still busy and very chaotic, but I think it was tamped down a little bit and then the extra staffing from police and fire really helped things. So that was good. And then give counsel on the one-time projects that were approved with the new budget. I know that council wants to make sure that these get done in a timely manner. So like I said, the engines ordered, the radios have been ordered and the cardiac monitors have been ordered. The bathroom remodel, the station exterior and the electronic sign, we're working, we're in the quote phase right now. We've got two of the three for majority of them. So half of our one-time purchases are already completed. And then one bit of exciting news or announcement was the strike team revenue from last season we finalized. We went on 16 deployments for a gross revenue of $650,000. 10 of those assignments were the brush truck alone. I remember when we talked about purchasing the brush truck, I I felt that we could recoup the cost in a couple seasons. It looks like we might have recouped the cost in one season. So and then that's all I have for the fire department. Any questions?
That's amazing. Any questions from council?
No, I would like to say though, you did, you actually, what you guys did for the 4th of July with the signs, it benefited all the booths because some of the booths actually sold out before it even got dark.
Awesome.
So it actually worked out pretty good.
Good.
Anything else from council? No? So I do just, I've been asked to ask if there will be an update on any information for the people that, you know, were shooting off the illegal fireworks. I know you guys had some investigations going on and I'm just wondering when the public could, because people are wanting to know if and when there will be, you know, any closures to those investigations.
Yeah, because they're investigations, we'll have to tread lightly with what we can give out, but I'll provide an update next council meeting or I can put it in my quarterly report if you'd like.
Okay, but we will have some idea from the public, like what happened, like how many people actually were cited and how many?
Well, yeah, we wrote eight citations.
Oh, you wrote eight citations?
Yes, sir.
Okay, but as far as like, is there gonna be more action on people or no?
No, that's it. We have the eight citations. Yeah.
Alright, thanks. No more questions? Alright.
On the police department side, I know it's pretty big when that happened, but Operation Shock Call with Fresno County and Magic, a couple of federal agencies. In town, they hit five different houses with the search warrants. Of those five houses, there were seven taken in custody, five on federal charges and two on state charges. So the good thing with the federal charge, they serve actually 8% of the, 80% of the time. So that's a big help for keeping them off the street. Part one crimes, so homicide, rape, robbery, assault, burglary, larceny, auto theft, we're down 6% from last year. If we go month to month, so June of last year to June of this year, we're actually down 33%. So the numbers are looking pretty good on that. As far as just positive community contacts, so nothing call for service wise, just our guys out there talking to people. We're at 57 contacts for last month. Vehicle tags, vehicle citations, we're at 28 for last month. So we are trying to help out code enforcement on that part of things. The chief's advisory board meeting will be Wednesday, the 30th. So we've got that one set for this year. I think it's the first one for this year. On staffing, we've got dispatch interviews on July 23rd. So we've got about 15 candidates for that, trying to fill our positions. I think pretty sure majority of you know of the situation we're trying to get and the staffing up there happen. So we do have quite a few people interviewing. Wrapped up the first Citizens Academy last month, had six people sign up, five people actually participated. Few bugs to work out, but other than that, it went pretty well. So hopefully we'll start advertising for the next one here shortly. And then our one-time budget items, we've actually got three that are in progress, maybe four. So we've got the new patrol vehicles ordered, our IT upgrades are on order and then the radio upgrade to help actually understand ourselves and whatnot and see they can get rid of a lot of the static we've got. That's all on order and just waiting for the big companies to get us everything. Unfortunately with the cars, it's gonna be one of those things where we're probably waiting till September when they're actually being built. So it's just the supply and demand portion of things like that and just on that timeline. Other than that, that's all I got unless you have any questions.
Will the new radios be encrypted or will they be standard channel?
Right now, we do have the ability to encrypt everything, but DOJ has lax kind of step back on that standard. So we haven't done that just because of the interoperability with every other agency.
Okay, thank you.
So I think the the positive interactions is a good thing. Can you give us any examples of a couple of those?
Just, I mean, if they're driving around getting on, talking to people.
Yeah.
So just stopping, walking a block and just talking.
Yeah, that's good to hear.
Any other questions for the police? Nope, okay. Thank you.
For the finance department, we have, we're in, we're in, we're, sorry, been very stressful because we're trying to close out and get the audit for the fiscal year 2324. So we're almost done. And at the same time, we're also trying to close out the fiscal year 2425 that ended 630. So all of that is going on at the same time. In addition to that, we are trying to put together the fiscal year 2526 budget binder. So all that stacked on top and overlapping throughout this possibly for the next two months. In regards to our project list, the major project that we have is to revamp the chart of accounts and we're hoping that that will make things better for how we report our financials. And that piece is not gonna come until later this calendar year. And I will be working with Price Page, who is our current consultant to put that together. So once we have that in place, then we will we will modify the system. And another reason why we're holding off on that until then is because I need my business systems analyst who we, who I look forward to because we have so many projects for this person. And so that's all I have for my department updates.
Any questions for finance? No? Thank you so much, mine. Appreciate that. Alright, we're gonna move on to item number five, which would be the Derrick Reservoir Rehabilitation Project Update by Henry Lang from NKN and Associates. Did I say that correctly? Excellent, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Vosburgh, council members, city staff. My name is Henry Leong. I'm a principal engineer with MKN and Associates. And I'll be giving you a brief update on the ongoing construction that's occurring out at the Derrick Reservoir. So next slide, please. So in terms of just some general highlights, original construction completion at the start of the project was supposed to be April 10th of 2025. And due to various construction challenges and and deficiencies with the tank that we've identified, which I'll get into in more detail later, we've had, we've already had a few change orders that have extended the construction duration. So as of right now, the approved contracted construction duration is gonna go through July 25th. Now, we know right now, there's no way we're gonna be anywhere close to being complete in in a week. So we don't have an updated schedule yet from the contractor. That's something that we've been waiting on. And there's also some activity that's going on that is making it uncertain to where contractor is not ready to provide a new extended date yet. But based on our observation, you know, my my team's observation, our our construction managers and inspectors that are in the field daily right now, we're forecasting that construction is gonna go sometime into September. And whether it's early or end of September, we're not quite sure yet, but we do, we do believe that it will go into September and the contractor is likely gonna be requesting for additional days that will extend the contract to that timeframe. So right now, you know, as of as of today, the contractor is basically working on some roof touch-up. So they have installed the roof, but there's various touch-up with welding and and coating and testing that's that's required. So that activity is ongoing. So if you go out to the site, the roof looks like it's all in place, but there is, there is still some touch-up activity that's occurring. But the the main work that's been going on the past several weeks is the blasting and coating of the tank shell, which is the tank wall. So it's a very big tank and coating of the tank shell, which is the tank wall. So it's a very big tank, and the reason why this has been going on is because during the blasting and coating process, that's where the contractor is identifying some defects in the tank, in the tank shell. And, and every time we identify an issue that's a defect, we have to, we have to identify it as an area for repair. So it's a very lengthy process. And some of the pictures I'll be going through shortly will, will help illustrate what that, what that looks like and, and, and why it's been taking so long. Now, once they're done with blasting and coating of the tank shell, they're then gonna be doing the same thing with the tank floor. The, the bottom of the tank also needs to go through the same process where we remove the coating and evaluate whether there's any areas that need to be repaired. And then after that work is complete, then they're gonna recoat the entire tank. And ideally, we would recoat the interior first to be able to bring the tank online sooner. So earlier I mentioned that construction will likely go through September, but we're hoping to bring the tank online sooner so that the utilities department will have access to that, to that storage. And then lastly, there's gonna be installation of various appurtenances, which I'll also explain in more detail in the following slides. So one of the, so we're kind of going through the, the causes of the construction challenges. You know, the main, the biggest one is, well, not the biggest, the first I'll identify is the roof structure. So the roof structure itself was identified to be in far worse condition than even the inspection that was performed just, just about two years ago. So, you know, we identified additional rafters had fallen. So, so the, the roof structure was in even worse shape than we anticipated during the design. Now, the biggest cause of the delay is the upper course replacement. And basically, the upper course replacement was, was replacing the entire upper eight feet of the tank. So, you know, during the initial observations, we identified that the upper course was just in too poor of condition to be able to just blast off the existing, the existing coating and to recoat. So that entire upper course was replaced. And that has resulted in the biggest change order and also the biggest construction delay. Now, the other items that I'll mention is piping and appurtenances. And what that entails is the various inlets and outlets in and out of the tank, various valves on that piping, the manways. There, there's various appurtenances that we've identified, you know, once we're moving the coating, that the condition is just not worth, not, not feasible to salvage. So, so additional change orders have resulted from complete replacement of those appurtenances instead of being able to salvage them. Those have not resulted in as, as, as significant of schedule delays, but they have, they have contributed to some of the delays. And then we've also noticed that just general construction progress has, has gone slower than anticipated. Things have just gone longer. The activity has, has been slower, the production rates have been slower. So that hasn't resulted in any change orders. That's just what our, our team has observed from our observations. Now, what's gonna be coming up are the, the, the tank shell repairs and the tank floor repairs. So I mentioned earlier that they've been, they've been in the process of blasting and coating or blasting and removing the coating. And through that process, they've identified areas that need to be repaired. So, so what's gonna be coming up is the actual repair. They're basically gonna be doing patch, patch repairs is what we call it. So depending on the size of the patch, they're gonna cut out an area to remove the, the deteriorated portions of the steel, and then they're gonna insert in a brand-new steel plate and then weld the perimeter. So, so it's, it's literally like a patch to replace the deteriorated portions of the steel. So, so that's gonna be occurring in the tank wall and the tank floor. So the next several slides are gonna just be an illustration of what I just mentioned. So this first picture is illustrating the upper course replacement. So you can see, you know, in just this picture, how pitted and corroded the upper course was. And, and this is just one of many portions. And where it was especially bad was along the weld between the upper course and then the, the second highest course. That, that weld seam was in such poor condition that, that there was no way we would be able to weld up to that original seam. So, so, so that's what this picture is, is showing. This is a picture showing some of the testing that we also performed to determine that we needed to replace the upper course. So once we identified that there were some issues, one of the testing companies came out to perform ultrasonic thickness testing of the entire perimeter upper course. And that was when we confirmed that the condition of the tank was, was, or the condition of the upper course was not worth salvaging. We, we really would be better off replacing the entire upper course than trying to do several patches that would end up almost becoming more costly or more complicated to do than replacing the entire upper course. Here's a picture of when they were removing the courses. So they removed them in, in sections and, and, you know, piece by piece, the upper course was taken down. And then here's a picture of the new panels that were installed. So the, you know, the upper course shown in this picture, you can see that steel is clean, it's, it's healthy, and the upper course is basically all new steel now. So here's a picture of the corrosion close up. So you can just see how poor that steel looks. You know, it's, it's pitted, it's, it's, this picture doesn't show the depth, but some of the future pictures will. But, but yeah, I mean, some, certain areas, it was corroded all the way through where, where you could actually see daylight. So this is a picture of just a larger area that's, that's, that's pitted and corroded, but, but yeah, in some areas, like you can't really tell how deep that is, but it's, it's significant. Here's a picture showing the, the wall pitting. So, you know, just using this gauge, you can see how, how, how much steel has been lost from the pitting. And, and, you know, this is just one blow up of one focused area, but just imagine this, you know, all throughout the upper course. So, so, you know, there were, there were, there were several measurements taken and observations made to come to the conclusion of replacing the upper course. And, and over the past several weeks, the contractor and our inspectors have been going through the entire tank shell, the, the wall, and, and identifying, you know, which additional areas are in need of the patches that, to, to repair those, those deteriorated areas. Here's a picture of the tank floor. So we, we still have to assess the entire tank floor, but here's a picture of an area where there was an entire hole that had formed in the tank floor. And before removing the coating, this was not visible, but after removing the coating, this is what we were, this is what we discovered. So there were literally portions of the tank floor that were only being held together or encapsulated because of the coating. Here's a close-up of the floor pitting. So other areas, it wasn't necessarily through and, and, and where a hole had formed, but there's, there's several areas where, where we observed pitting, such as this. Now, here's a picture of what I'm talking about with the appurtenances. So this is a manway on the, the left in the middle picture. This is a picture of the manway. You know, after removing the coating, we can just tell that, that, that steel is in very poor condition. There's no way we can salvage that. So that manway is gonna be replaced with a new manway. And then the other appurtenances would include like the liquid, the liquid level indicator showing how much water is in the tank. Those appurtenances are, are, are just in, in very poor condition. And, and it, it makes sense, right? I mean, this is a fifty-plus-year-old tank, so it's, it's definitely had its life. So what's that, what's those delays really mean in addition to impacts to the construction duration? Is that, that, that means that my, my team, that, you know, MKN's construction management team is also now gonna need to be out there longer to be able to continue our inspections and observations. So our original scope of work was, was based on a construction duration through May of 2025. That was the, that was the original construction duration and contract completion date. And if everything had gone as planned and the tank was in much better shape, we would have been able to hit that date. But because of those challenges that I mentioned, we're now looking at an additional five months of construction, which would mean an additional five months of construction management. So on the consent items is an amendment for our team to basically continue our services for an additional five months. And, and just one thing to mention is, our amendment is based on a worst-case condition. So it basically assumes our staff and our inspectors and our sub consultants will be pretty much out there at the critical construction periods pretty much full-time. And, and it's also assuming construction all the way through the end of September. So hopefully, we'll be able to come in well under budget in that the construction completion will, will beat what we're anticipating as worst case. But I just wanted to mention that the amendment is based on assuming a worst-case scenario. So any questions?
Counsel, have any questions?
I got a, I got a quick question. I'm not sure if you're familiar with actually being out there. When they removed the roof, did they drop it straight down or did they hoist it out? Because I know common practice is let it drop, and then you remove the walls.
Yeah, you know, I, I, I don't remember the, the sequence.
I'm just curious if, if, if they did drop it, if that's what some of the cause is of the damage.
Oh, you mean like if it fell?
Yes. No, no, no. As they're cutting their, their panels out, they just let it drop and then just move over to the next area and cut out another area and let it drop.
Yeah, no, they, that, that was definitely not allowed. Yeah, we, we had them remove piece by piece.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
But there, but there were practices, so there could have been damage.
Yeah.
I used to do that, so that's why I'm asking you.
Any other questions from council?
So how long is something like this gonna last after all the work is done?
Yeah, that's a good question. I mean, we're, we're, we're replacing all the deteriorated areas that we're finding. So it's not necessarily gonna be equivalent to a brand-new, you know, welded steel tank, but we're addressing all the defects and the, and the deteriorate, the, the deteriorated areas. So I would, I would, you know, a brand, a brand-new tank is always kind of said to be a fifty-year tank. But I would say this would be something less than that, you know, whether it's thirty, whether it's twenty, no one, no one really knows. But yeah, I would say it's somewhere between thirty to fifty years would be reasonable.
And I know we've had a lot of kind of change orders on this, or would it, like, what's this compared to like a new tank?
Yeah, we, we look at that, we, we consider that every time a change order comes in. Right now, we're still well below the cost of a brand-new tank. And the construction duration for a brand-new tank would have also been easily a year and a half, two years. So we're still tracking, you know, well below that, but that's something we think about quite frequently.
All right. If you have a question, I'm gonna need you to come up to the podium. Sorry. We are working on getting a mobile microphone. We don't have it yet, though.
My question would be, what kind of preventative maintenance program would have prevented all this? And what kind of a preventative maintenance program can you recommend to get that twenty-five, thirty or so years lifespan?
Sure. Yeah, no, that's a great question. I mean, this tank had a very long life. I mean, it, it's definitely served its additional purpose. And that means that this tank was, was properly maintained and, and serviced throughout the years. But typical, typical maintenance would include inspections every two or three years, which, which I know we're done, repainting and, and, and recoding every, you know, every few years for, for maintenance. You know, the tank would be taken offline, drained, and then, and then recoding would be done every five or ten years. There's also cathodic protection. So when we put this tank back online, it will, it will have an impressed current cathodic protection system to help mitigate the, the corrosion. So those are, those are some of the standard practices. And, and, yeah, from, from what we know and could tell, the city did a great job maintaining the tank. That's why it had such a long life. It's, it's just that it's, it was due and it was, it was a matter of time. And, you know, we, we, we probably did, the, the city is completing this project at a good time because based on what we've discovered, who knows how much longer this tank would have lasted.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none. Thank you so much. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna move on to our favorite code enforcement report. Item number two point six, code enforcement report, June 2025, Yanith Ibarra, code enforcement officer.
Good evening, council and city staff. So here's my report for the month of June. So there was a total of eighty-one cases, new cases that were open for the month of June. Fifty-six of those cases were unlicensed businesses. It was followed by twenty, excuse me, eighteen property maintenance cases and four animal cases. Twenty-eight cases were also closed for the month of June, and I issued five administrative citations. Regarding vehicle nuisances, I issued eleven vehicle tags and twelve parking citations. And that's all I have.
Any questions for Yanith? No? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, so we have already done the citizens' comments. So we're gonna move on to public hearings. And this is item number four point one, public hearing and adoption of resolution number four-two-six-two, approving the local government plan and authorizing the interned city manager to execute the permanent local housing allocation program, PLHA amendment plan, streamline application and standard agreement if awarded. Sean?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We have Terry Solis from Self-Hub Enterprises that's going to provide the presentation, and then we'll kind of accept any comments or questions that the council may have. So I will, and I think she's on Zoom, so I will hand it over to Terry. There's a couple of action items that are just on this public hearing, as you can see from the title, related to an application as well as amending prior funding sources. So Terry, are you there?
Yes, I am. Good evening, everyone. I wanted to go over initially when the PLHA application initially was, NOFA was released, the city applied for all five years of their allocation, and the HCD had allocated a set number of dollars per year. The allocate, the PLHA funding is based on real estate sales, and there's a fee associated with those sales that then goes into this funding bucket. The year 2023 would have, was still not allocated at the time of the application, and so we are having to apply for that last 2023 year, this year. Years 2019 through 2022 have already been allocated, and we have submitted a request for funds for the city on that. So the year 2023, we still need to apply for that and submit the application for that. The difference is that when we initially applied in, for the 2029, 2019 application, the funds, the way we requested them, we requested that Activity Nine, which is mortgage assistance, excuse me, accessibility modifications, that funding was intended to be seven thousand five hundred. We are requesting that that be amended to ten thousand dollars. And I have to put in the chat. And I have to put in the chat real quickly what that entails so that we have it. But we are requesting to amend it to ten thousand dollars. And then instead of it being a twenty-year, zero percent interest deferred loan, we're wanting to amend it to five-year, zero percent interest deferred and forgivable for up to ten thousand dollars. The reason for this is that the cost to the city to continue to monitor that loan would far exceed the actual benefit to the borrower. So we're requesting to get that amended for the accessibility modification activity nine. For activity two, that is for ADU construction and rehabilitation, we initially had applied to have those loans be up to forty thousand dollars. We're requesting that we amend that to a hundred thousand dollars. It would be an affordability period now for twenty years, but it would be forgivable as well as opposed to it being deferred and paid back later on. It would still be zero percent interest. We found that a loan for forty thousand dollars to build an ADU would not be anywhere close to be sufficient for our community members. And we feel that a hundred thousand would be closer to making it accessible and doable for the, the population in, in your community. We're also asking to increase the AMI from sixty percent to a hundred and twenty percent. And I believe the standard agreement had that, but for some reason it didn't quite match the resolution. So we want to make sure that we catch that, the initial resolution. So I'm not sure if anybody has any questions, but those are the changes that were requested.
Counsel, have any questions?
Yeah, I have a quick question. You said a hundred and twenty percent. Did I hear that correct? Because ours is showing a sixty percent AMI and they want to change it to an eighty percent AMI.
And that, that activity is for the mortgage, for the accessibility modification.
Up here. It's on the eligibility activities for the new application for the ADUs. It's a hundred and twenty of AMI.
For ADU, it would be a hundred and twenty AMI. And for the accessibility modification, we would leave it at eighty percent AMI.
And that just expands the access to the applicants to be able to utilize it, and then also increasing the amount that we can loan out under this program. So because of the cost of these ADUs have actually gone up, we're starting to hear the numbers of close to a hundred thousand dollars to build one of these ADUs that we had designed a year or so ago.
And this is only for ADUs?
There's multiple, so you can see the multiple eligible activities, but that's only specific to the ADUs. Yeah, but there is funding available for other activities as well under this program.
Where have any of these been, been built and who built them for that price?
They haven't been.
So the cost keeps going up?
We're getting, well, we're getting, we've gotten caught, we got cost assessments when they originally, when they were originally designed. And we've been talking to other folks around the valley in terms of what the price per square foot is to build the, the ADUs themselves. And we, and I think Roberts even talked to some local contractors, getting some pricing, and we're seeing that the pricing's gone up a little higher.
And another consideration that is so often overlooked is that when you're, you're doing this, the connection feeds to your, your, your grid and stuff, even though the contractors are giving bids, they're giving bids on, on the blueprints and they're not doing the full scope of actually building it and putting it and everything. So when that adds to that cost, we have seen so many contract bids for ADU construction. And I would think six out of ten leave a big chunk of the, the build off of the, of the bid.
Yeah, we're, so what we're doing is we're trying to make it a little bit more accessible. Because, and the reason why we're doing some of the amendments is because we're seeing some struggles with applicants being able to obtain the funding. So the funding's kind of sat there because we haven't been able to get folks eligible. So we're trying to make it more flexible for people to become eligible. I know, according, been talking to Robert continuously throughout weeks and months, there are, there are interest in building them. And so, but the reality, like, like Terry was saying, you know, forty thousand dollars isn't, isn't very much to be able to support it with the terms that we have on the funding that we can do. It ends up being kind of a revolving fund for us because people will eventually pay it back or it's forgiven over a certain amount of period. But this, this money still is obviously restricted. We can't just open it up to anybody, unfortunately. It's gotta be restricted. But like, as we know, a lot of the money that comes from the state comes down through, has the affordability tag. And so it does, does kind of limit us on how, how, where, who our applicants can be in terms of who wants to build these. And so basically we're trying to go within the parameters, but also try to get those guidelines to expand our applicant pool as much as possible and be as less stringent as possible on who can apply. So we're hoping that this will drive a little bit extra. Once we get this public outreach coordinator, these are programs that we're really gonna try to push and get out as we don't see a lot of literature out right now. Self-help does help in trying to get that information out. But I think having this, our new position, that's where the communication method comes out of being able to convey to the community, hey, these are programs that are available to folks, because it's not just ADUs, it's housing rehab, weatherization programs, down payment assistance. There are a lot of different programs that we actually do offer. It's just trying to find applicants that qualify.
Typical state stuff. They offer something up and make it impossible to use.
And again, Mayor, this is a public hearing, so we'll want to open the public hearing for any public comment.
So I was just gonna wait for any more counsel comments before we open the public hearing. Okay, so I have one more question. Are these funds able to be used by government agencies as well? For like instances where you have fires that have, you know, taken over areas and the, the, the person can't afford to rebuild or they don't rebuild? And, you know, the, the agency is basically stuck rehabbing that? Could these funds be used in accordance to, with that by chance?
Um, PLHA funds, to, to my knowledge, they cannot. But we do have, in another jurisdiction, we did have a project going on for flood. So I would think it's a similar situation where the, the, the home has to be real built. And we could definitely keep our eyes open for the, that type of funding. But PLHA, to my awareness, is not, isn't intended for that, for reconstruction.
Okay. Any other questions for counsel? All right, I'm gonna open up the public hearing. Does anybody from the public wanna come forward to the microphone and make a comment? One, two, three. All right, seeing none, we're gonna close the public hearing. And I think we're gonna need a roll call vote on this, correct? So can I, anyone want to entertain a motion?
Make a motion to approve item number four point one, resolution number four-two-six-two, approving local government plan and authorizing the interned city manager to execute the permanent local housing allocation program.
It's been moved? Anyone want a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Can we get a roll call?
Mayor Pro Tem Horn?
Aye.
Counsel member Schindler?
Aye.
Counsel member Hitchcock?
Aye.
Counsel member Ramirez?
Nay, just because I want more information on other individuals to, to be able to get on this. It's just, I guess, more expensive, more expensive. And how are we supposed to spend this money if it's not, if it's not even affordable?
Okay.
Mayor Vosberg?
And I vote aye. So it's four to one passes. We're going to move on. And we thank, we thank you for coming on board and giving this presentation to us.
Absolutely. And the sponsors, we'd be happy to have them to help address those concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we are gonna move on to the consent calendar. We have, it looks like fifteen items. Five point one through fourteen on this, on this agenda. And then we added five point one from the, the special agenda. Do we have anything that people would like to pull?
I'd like to pull five point eight for a question.
Anybody else?
Mayor, I need to pull five point fourteen.
All right. And I would like to pull five dot twelve. Anyone else?
Eleven.
Eleven, just for information, or to, that way for the public, the ones that are not present here or just wondering. Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and start with five dot eight, approval of amendment number two to the construction management agreement with MKN Associates for the Derrick Reservoir Rehabilitation Project.
All right, my question is, do we have any contingencies for overages, overages and run-ons for this water tank? Loss of revenue to the contractor for not fulfilling the timeline?
So, and, and Henry maybe will answer this too. We're, we're definitely following the timeline. There has been a lot of back and forth, as Henry mentioned even in the presentation, about scheduling and holding the contractor to reasonable timeframes based on some of the changes, the unforeseen issues, obviously, that we've seen in the tank. So that's why we haven't seen a schedule update and we see these delayed scheduled updates because a lot of, there's a lot of behind-the-scenes going back and forth with our construction management team and the contractor. Because sometimes there's a small repair that needs to be done and then they want to add thirty days to the contract. And we're going back and forth. Right now, we're kind of at an impasse in terms of some of these changes that are actually happening, which result in a different approach to doing the work, which requires us to have to oversee the contractor more diligently to ensure that we're getting it done in an adequate time, rather than just saying, oh, yeah, we'll give you thirty more days or sixty more days. There's been a lot of pushback. I've seen the emails going back and forth and pushing back with the contractors because a lot of times they just try to give themselves extra time. And we want to make sure that they're being expeditious and moving forward because we know that we're limited on storage right now. And so we want to make sure that we get this tank up and running as soon as possible. But yes, we, we are following that. We have all our contingencies in place as the project kind of goes out further. But in terms of holding the, the, the actual contractor accountable, I feel like we're doing the best we can to hold them accountable. MKN has a lot of experience in construction management, especially on these types of infrastructure projects. So they know the timelines, they know the expectations of what work needs to be done to complete a task, even when they run into these kind of unforeseen issues. Hopefully that answers it? No?
It's, it's an answer. The other thing was a lot of the stuff that he explained didn't seem like it went in the right order on the, on a tank repair. I've been around a lot of tank repairs and it seemed like some of the stuff was, they're jumping around from spot to spot and weren't, and it could have just been the way it was presented, but it didn't sound like it was done in the correct order. Like, why were they doing some of the testing on the shell halfway through? Could have been done at the beginning. Stuff like that.
I could have, I could have Henry, because some of these were, these were, these testing, some of these things were done, triggered based on what were, what, what observations were occurring once the blasting started occurring.
Yeah, it was a fifty-plus-year-old tank. A lot of that testing should have been done upfront, is all I'm.
The ultrasonic should have picked that up before it even started. And apparently it's not a good enough machine for it to be done again or updated. Because now it's costing extra because the machine wasn't accurate.
Yeah, I can, I can address both of those questions. So regarding the construction sequence, I mean, some of it was means and method, but I think the order of how I presented it was not, it definitely wasn't like a linear sequence of the, of the construction. In terms of how they've done the process, I mean, from, from, from our understanding, the, the, the order of how they've proceeded with the construction, we, we don't necessarily have any objections with. There might be a few tasks or activities that we would maybe, like our team would have maybe done in, in a slightly different order, but big picture-wise, they've done everything in the right order. One of the challenges with the, the blasting is they, they, they have to, they have to blast, they have to blast the coating off and they have a short window on when they can really perform that testing and then when they'll, when they'll have to recoat. So a lot of the work that they've done, they don't want to spend all this time reblasting it now or reblasting it early on for, for the purposes of recoding it. Because if they, if they went through that process and then we identified some issues halfway through, then they're basically having to reblast it again later because they, they have to recoat it within a certain window from the time that it's blasted. So things kind of, things might seem like they're out of order, but it's because of that, of that constraint. You know, once they blast, they, if, if they were to blast it all the way down to where it can be surface-prepped and recoded, and then we ran into this issue where we're identifying these defects, then all that, all that blasting that they did is, is basically wasted. They would have to redo it again anyway. So a lot of this is kind of trying to find that fine line of how much blasting do we do to be able to find the, the areas that have been, that have pitted versus not taking it so far to where they're just having to redo the blasting. So, so I'm, I'm not sure if that answers your, your question at all, but that's, that's part of why the sequence is, is, seems a little sporadic.
It answers it, but it doesn't make sense to me because all the ones I've seen, they blast, they, they inspect and then they'll go back and do a real quick sweep blast before they coat. So that doesn't, it answers my question, but it just doesn't seem right. Seems like it drug out the repairs a long time, which is keeping water from our tank that services the city. And that's what I'm worried about as a counsel person.
Sure. Yeah. And in respect to.
Yeah, and the cost continuing to run up every time they find something new.
Yeah, and the question about the ultrasonic thickness testing, the, the, the last tank inspection two or three years ago, that performed some level of testing, but it's, it's very sporadic, like the spacing was very, the, like, the, the spacing was, was pretty spaced out in order to be able to kind of do the whole tank at a reasonable cost.
So they didn't test every inch? They went like every?
Every fifty feet or something.
Something like that?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, so, so they didn't do it properly then? Especially with it being fifty years old, it should have been, the, the whole entire thing should have been done so we know where we're at. Now we've got an extra two hundred thousand dollar cost because they didn't do it properly.
I mean, I, I would say that they did it properly based on the scope that was, that was approved. I mean, I'm sure they would have loved to do every five feet, every ten feet, but that would have added to the cost significantly. So, so usually, usually the, the procedure is they, they do every fifty feet or so. And then if there's, if there's locations that seem like they're reading low, then we would maybe focus on that more. But in that test, there, there weren't any signs of that. And it wasn't until we did do the very tight interval with the, with the upper course, that's when we identified the bigger issues.
I'm just worried about, we need to stay on track and we need to get the tank done.
Agreed.
So, so is there any other potential that may come along that's gonna cost more?
The floor. So as they blast the tank floor more, more thoroughly, there could be additional patch repairs needed on the tank floor, just like we've identified in the wall. So we, we know, we know what we're, having the patch repair on, on the, in the walls now. And, and just as of yesterday, that, that's been completed. There's twenty-eight patch repairs that are going to be needed on the walls. How much time that's gonna take, we don't know yet. That's, that's what's gonna be performed on a time-of-materials basis. And that's why our inspectors are gonna be making sure that the contractor is proceeding diligently, that their crews are actively working, that we're counting their crews, counting the material, so that we, we know that what they end up asking for cost-wise is, is, is accurate. Now, the floor is not, has not been fully checked yet, so that's, that's kind of the last unknown.
They haven't even scanned the floor yet?
Well, so there was an alternative that was proposed to do a full scan of the floor. It was, it was, it was, it was, it was discussed with city staff and we determined that the cost of that scan would be, it, it, it would prohibit, it, it wasn't feasible because not only are we looking at the cost of the scan, which. it, it wasn't feasible because not only are we looking at the cost of the scan, which that itself is not that significant, what it would require is they would have, the contractor would have to blast the whole floor, we'd have to scan it, and then they'd have to re-blast it again before we re-coat. And that would add an additional, um, six weeks or so to the project construction, which, at that time, we did, we decided it was not worth, um, the, the, that, that delay, that additional delay that it would cause. We'd be better off proceeding with seeing what we observed when we blasted, doing patch repairs, and then doing one final blast at the end to, to, before the final coating.
I don't know if the other ones, the other council have time or not, but is there any way that we can possibly set a time and maybe go take a tour, exactly what you're talking about? I did this stuff for many years.
Yeah.
And, uh, I just, I just want to take a look at it and see.
Yeah, I mean, our inspectors are out there pretty much five days a week right now, so, um, I can, I can work with Sean to, uh, come up with a good date.
Okay.
And make that happen.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments from the council?
Yeah, I was just wondering, is, is this going to affect our plan to be able to provide water without that tank, the, the continuation into August or September?
Um, as of right now, we're, we're sustaining. We've done water modeling, um, and based on the, the output from the plant, um, we can supply water through the hottest part of the months. So we've, uh, we've worked with Dan, we've worked with MKN, done, uh, we did a lot of modeling before the project to make sure that we could, you know, even take it offline, right? Um, so we were able to conclude that we could, and then we've done some recent modeling, looking at previous water trends during July, August and September. Um, and so we're, the plant can put out the amount of water that's needed even, because we broke it down to almost an hourly demand, um, based on some modeling, so we can, the, the plant is capable of putting out the volume that's needed to supply through the hot months. Um, we've also worked with the schools, the parks and, um, the college, and so we all have them on different days, and so that's actually, we've already seen a huge difference um, in trend, and how our water fluctuates, the usage. We used to see a lot of, a significant use of water on Sunday nights, going into Monday, and now we're not seeing that. And that's because I think the school, the parks and the college are all watering on Sunday night. Um, as well as, you know, the community members do use water, however, they're our biggest water users, and so we've kind of put them all out onto a, uh, we spread them out, so they shouldn't really, they're not really watering at the same time. And even we've tried to factor in our watering at the parks, at our parks on those off days as well, so we're trying to spread it out and we're seeing more evenly distributed water use. So we're able to manage that. And then we have contingencies if we do have any other issues that arise. But volumetric, we, we should be fine to keep up with the demand in town. And we'll continue, and we continue to monitor that like daily. No problem.
Any other questions? No? Alright, I appreciate that, thank you so much. We're going to move on to item number five point eleven. Authorize, uh, the Fresno Sheriff's Office to assist the Colinga Police Department with evening dispatch service coverage on an interim basis due to an immediate need until a formal MOU is considered in August.
So, the request on this, and I can let Sean chime in a little bit and he can talk about some of the challenges we're having, but in, in nutshell, essentially, we're running into some problems with, uh, the, you know, reliability on our, on our dispatch center and, um, fluctuation in staffing. And, um, not to say that, I mean, we could be at a critical level and we're trying to get ahead of it, is what we're trying to do. And what this is, is kind of a pre-authorization by the council to allow us to work with the sheriff's office to provide support at, during, during evening hours, the overnight shift. Um, and so the chief, uh, has been talking with the sheriff's office. This is kind of in place, um, that, you know, basically trying to get ahead of it, right? We're trying to see if we have contingencies in place. Uh, there's a reason that we added the, uh, the, the dispatch per diem position. So we're trying to take a similar approach that, you know, has been working for the, for the EMS division and trying to bring in folks to help bridge the gap of, of shifts that we can't, we may not be able to cover. And so, between the per diems, that may actually alleviate this, this, those per diems actually, that kind of came just in the last week. Um, that's why it came through as a special item on the special agenda. But this is kind of the stopgap, hopefully, if we absolutely needed to, would be to work with the sheriff's office to help bridge that, that gap and that shift at night. Um, but it allows, at least this allows us the flexibility to say, hey, we need it, when we need it, and then eventually we'll come back with an MOU so we can utilize, we'll have the services. Um, but we've kind of broken down the costs associated with that, we're trying to work with them on half cost, not a full contract cost, even though they're only going to be covering for twelve hours. So as we work through that, um, but, you know, in conversation with the sheriff's office, we don't want to put a huge pressure or burden on them as well, so we're going to try to do whatever we can do ourselves to try and bridge that gap, so we don't have to go to the, to the sheriff's office. As we showed in the staff information on the per diems, it'll actually be less for us if we can hire these per diems to cover those, uh, those shifts. Hope, does that make sense?
Yeah. Are we getting any locally applicants, if anything?
The, out of the pool right now, um, thirteen of the fifteen come into us with zero experience. Uh, the last few we've done backgrounds on, they've either pulled out or failed the background process, so it's not that we're not trying, it's just getting somebody in here.
And that's one of the big challenges, is that we, we can bring these people on, but they're shadowing for five months, so it's like, we get someone, but then they've got to part, they've got to shadow with somebody else. Well, we don't have, we need bodies to fill and be able to go on their own. And so that's the challenge, what we're right into. The per diem positions, that'll be approv, hopefully approved tonight, it's a, it's an experienced dispatcher, and with an emphasis on utilizing the system that we use. If not, we can, according to Sean and the chief, that we can train these folks up pretty quick if they're just having to adjust to a system, rather than having to learn how to do dispatch. And so, we're, we're doing what we can, we're thinking outside the box, trying to fill these gaps, because there's a huge benefit to having your own dispatch center, and that's the last thing we want to do.
Is there, I mean, is there some kind of thinking of opening up, like, sending them to a training?
They do. They, they get training, but the problem is the training's five months.
Five months, okay.
And they're job shadowing for five months.
Is dis, dispatch is represented now, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, when negotiations come, we might even be able to work something to at least hold people or bring somebody in, or multiple?
Yeah, I believe they start negotiations next year, I think, is when their contract's up.
Yeah.
It should be, pretty soon.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, we're definitely working on trying to resolve this problem, um, and so we've got, we've got some other things that we're working on that's going to help.
Since we're having that issue, is there any way we can bring that item back and possibly renegotiate, adjust the contract? So that way we can actually get somebody and retain them?
It, it's, it's in the works, yeah.
Okay.
So this, this, for the public knowledge, this won't affect nine-one-one service?
No.
For Colinga?
No.
Just going to shift how it operates?
We're just, we're just adjusting how we operate, yeah. If it does go to the sheriff's office, you're not reaching local people, but you're still being served. Our officers are still being notified of activity and where to go.
Yeah, I just don't want people worrying about not being able to dial nine-one-one.
No, I, I definitely want to be clear that, no, our, you need to, if you need to call nine-one-one, we will answer.
Any other questions from council? Seeing none. Move on to item number five dot twelve, um, strategic plan implementation.
This is a big document, so do you guys have questions?
So, I just, uh, I really, I really like this, to be honest with you. This shows accountability. This is like, you know, I wanted to pull this for the public's benefit because uh, a lot of times in government, things like strategic plans are put forward, but then they're not followed up on. And those, uh, it's very important that you follow up on those, uh, for accountability and for transparency and to make sure that the public knows that, you know, where the, the money said that they're going to spend, that it's spent, and then it's spent on time. That way that, uh, we don't have, you know, situations where we have, you know, large amounts of money that are held up or that we didn't spend and now it's costing us more. And so I was just wondering if you could give just a brief, you know, summary of this. I know it's a large document. I mean, I can read some of this myself, uh, but there's some pretty important stuff in here that you've, uh, you know, you could just skim off the top.
So, the staff report actually does kind of, kind of summarize it, so I can probably kind of go through that, but, um, so like, for, through the infrastructure improvements, projects include citywide upgrades such as access control, uh, city hall and police department rehab, uh, facility landscaping, public infrastructures that are underway like the Derrick Reservoir completion, the ADA transition plan, solar installations of both the water and wastewater plants, and then efforts are ongoing to rehabilitate the fire department exterior, purchase of backflow enclosure installations in the Center median and Valley gutter projects. In terms of community engagement and events, um, National Night Out, we got the Colinga Air Show. Um, additional projects include finalizing design of the outdoor food court, which we have some updates on that. We're, we're working on the con, concept design right now, um, installing banner decorations, uh, planning of the Ramsey Splash Park, uh, and the city also is preparing a team building event and an employee appreciation ceremony. I guess it's more of an event than a ceremony. Um, in terms of public safety and emergency preparedness, um, we've initiated projects such as the, um, civic ready for emergency alerts. Uh, the fire chiefs are kind of taking the lead on that, uh, the installation of the fire department generator and the procurement of the command trailer for PD. There are other notable efforts include updating the animal control ordinance, uh, remodeling fire facilities, um, and launching a feasibility study for enhanced fire services at the airport. In terms of the technology and administrative modernization, uh, we've launched initiatives to modernize internal operations um, and resident-facing services, so, including website redesign, a chatbot integration allows a little bit more streamlined access to questions being answered on the website. Implementation of NeoGov, NeoGov's been huge for us. I think all departments can attest to the fact that our application pool, our applicant pool, has gone up tenfold since we've gone to NeoGov. Our exposure is significant. We've seen a drastic increase in applicants be, uh, submitting. We have forty-five applicants for Groundskeeper this year, so, um, we're definitely seeing an increase in that. Um, also, OneMeeting, OneMeeting's basically our, our software for our agenda, so we're working through that. Um, we've also got AI-assisted building plan checks that Robert's looking into. I know that, that new technology is out there, whether or not it's going to be something that's coming around right away, we don't know yet. Um, and then work is also underway to allow virtual and credit card payments as well, so we're still working through that. In terms of employee and organizational development, we got several projects to aim enhance, uh, city's workforce, environment and operations. We're launching appreciation programs, expanding employee benefits education, and updating key finance policies, uh, related to reserves, purchasing, travel, and decentralization of, uh, finance functions. And then also housing and economic development, where, you know, obviously committed to supporting affordable housing efforts by, you know, constructing ADUs and continuing to pursue economic development opportunities that align with the community's long-term vision. Um, and so, these monthly, these updates will come monthly, um, department heads have their list, so you'll see them from the same folks. Um, and so, we'll continue to provide an update. If there's any questions on any of the specific projects, um, we'll be more than happy to answer them. If there's any delays that are occurring, struggles that we're having, hopefully those are addressed in the monthly reports so you guys can see what, why projects sometimes take longer, and then other projects that go quickly. And then I'll periodically update you guys on the one-time project list, which is a little bit different than this particular list. But we're making some pretty good headway already on the one-time projects. I think everyone's having fun making purchases and getting things ordered, so.
And then we're updating the website as well, as things get changed and as things get, like, when we see a project that's going to take a little bit longer, we update that, the website.
Yeah, my plan is to put this project, this envisioned project list on the website, uh, monthly and probably just update it so you guys kind of see what, where we're currently at with the projects. Once we get a public outreach coordinator on, that's when we'll start the redesign effort with Civic Plus, and then we'll have a lot more, um, we'll have a lot more effort, um, put into updating the website more consistently. Something that we can admit we're not really great at right now is continuing to update. I think if you talk to any local agency, or any business, sometimes it's very difficult unless you have someone dedicated to maintain a website and keep it updated. So, our goal is to keep that update because communication is going to be key in the future, and still now, but we want to be more communicative out down the road, um, and so I think that, that position's going to be important to maintain that and keep everything updated, so we'll continue to get better at that.
Well, I appreciate that. Um, and the reason I pulled this was so that anybody that's watching at home and, you know, doesn't think to pull up the agenda, that they can hear that there's quite a, a few things in the pipeline. Uh, the city council, the city, the city staff, everyone's working together on all of these type of things. Economic development is something, you know, that, working on finance, new ways from what I understand of conducting business, uh, is, is in the works. Um, you know, I, 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 I see complaints, I hear complaints, uh, from people, and what I would say is, you know, come attend a council meeting, understand what's going on. You know, we have the folks here that can answer questions for you, um, and there is absolutely a ton of things going on that may not be, you know, projects that, that stand out right this very second because, you know, we've just got started, you know, we're working on quite a bit of stuff and the city's doing, uh, pretty good. We've had a situation where, you know, we, uh, um, have had an intern city manager, that's, that's been something that, that we're working on as well. And so, um, I just want to thank staff for all that you guys have done, and, and I really appreciate this report and I look forward to seeing it, uh, because this is what the public, that we can grasp on to, to tell the public, hey, this is the things that we're doing. And, uh, you know, I appreciate that, so, that's, that's the reason I pulled it. Anybody else have questions on this or comments?
Yeah, is, um, is there like a little kind of version that we could put on the kiosk? In case, you know, somebody could, just like.
Um, I can try, I can try and pare it down. I mean, we can provide the list, perhaps?
Yeah.
Maybe we'll do that, yeah, we can probably do that. We have the list that we build off of, so, we can do that and find, and get away on the kiosk.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Seeing none, we're going to move on to item number fourteen, the deal of the day.
Yeah.
Oh, do we, do we, did we pull thirteen too? Oh, no, I didn't? Okay. See, on number fourteen, we're going to turn this over to the city attorney.
Yeah, thank you, mayor. Um, just really an update on, on this item, so, uh, for the public's benefit, um, after forty-three applicants and literally, um, they came from all over the country, um, we, the council has agreed to terms with the interim city manager to become the permanent city manager. So a draft of the agreement has been given to the clerk and placed in the binder, um, for the, for the public's knowledge, but, uh, I need to summarize the terms for the agreement for the council to approve tonight, so, um, it's a four-year term, uh, starting tonight, ending in July thirty-first of twenty twenty-nine, unless that's amended by the council and the city manager in the meantime. Uh, the city manager is going to receive a monthly salary of sixteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, which is with, currently within the city manager, um, salary range. Um, and the only, uh, as long as with their benefits, um, and leaves that are, uh, allocated in the, in the contract. The only other change that needs to be made, uh, to the contract is on page two of four, the sixth bullet, there's two sentences, uh, the sentence, the second sentence needs to be deleted regarding the unused admin hours. Um, and so if, um, council doesn't have any questions, uh, on approval, if it could, uh, approve the agreement subject to that modification, uh, that would be the request.
Council have any questions? Uh, since the pub, for any of the publics here, does the public have any questions? Uh, I know appointing a city manager is an important, uh, task, an important deal, and, uh, if, uh, you know, city treasurer has any input, if, uh, the, the public has any input?
I'm just curious as to, um, how many applicants we got and what that process looked like and why we came to this conclusion.
Yeah, so, um, as I mentioned, we had forty-three applicants, literally from all over the country, from California to Florida. Um, that was, uh, the public may remember that, um, the city hired a consultant, um, to do the screening, to collect the applications. Uh, I think, I believe the first round, um, the, uh, consultant whittled it down to about twelve applicants uh, that were obviously qualified. Um, there were plenty of applicants who either didn't have any experience or didn't meet the minimum qualifications. Um, and then based on that, the consultant, um, talked to council, um, got that down to, I want to say, like, about six, uh, for interviews. Um, and then before, there were some of those who dropped out as well, but, um, uh, there were about six who were ultimately selected for an interview.
Any other questions or comments from anyone?
It was a pretty thorough, um, process, and it, we did whittle it down to the best candidate.
Yeah, I don't know how much, uh, we can discuss the process, uh, since it was in closed session, but, um, I can say that it was very thorough and that, uh, we had all the council there, and that it was unanimous. Um, I can say that, and I can say that, uh, I've, I've. I can say that. And I can say that I, I was the public member on the outside looking in. I would have obvious questions to the council, but I can tell you as a member of the public that we were very thorough, we asked a lot of questions. Everyone was treated with respect and dignity and the same. And so we didn't, you know, deviate, you know, no one had the questions ahead of time. And, you know, it was an interesting process to go through. And I was actually surprised at the candidates that we did get and the, the process of how, you know, some were weeded out because they just weren't qualified to what. And our qualifications were actually pretty high. You know, we had moved some of them down a little bit. But with that being said, the ones that we ended up interviewing were all qualified candidates and so.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
I'm just curious, I know initially when this was brought up and discussion from the attorney to a citizen that had concerns over us hiring an agency to look outside for management. It was said that upon doing so, that would, might open the door for other candidates that had applied for that position to be utilized in different positions. And being that we do have two very important positions currently available, are we able to utilize those individuals in those positions or are we looking in that direction to do so?
I, I think there were some secondary candidates that the council was interested in doing that.
And, you know, that wouldn't, you know, and that's not in the, the council's purview to hire. That would be for the city manager, new city manager. But I can tell you that we did request for that to happen and for that information to be passed along. And I would personally say that we're absolutely qualified people into there. Now, whether or not they would take a, a role, you know, in that capacity, I don't know. But we do have a list to give. So yes, we do have that. Any other questions from anyone? No, seeing none. Any other questions from council? No? All right, can anyone want to entertain a motion to approve items, the consent calendar five point one through fifteen?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar with minor changes, as written.
Thank you.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Seeing none. Consent calendar passes, including the approval of our new city manager and his employment agreement.
Thank you.
And we appreciate that. And I guess I will just, would it be okay to have a comment from the council on that?
Yeah, in, in, in addition, I mean, at least I'd request, you know, just how this got presented at the next council meeting, if the council wanted to have a swearing in or introduction of the new city manager, that would be certainly appropriate.
Yeah, okay. So maybe we'll save our comments until then.
Or you can say whatever you want, I don't want to hear it.
Yeah, okay, so we will, we'll get that scheduled. All right, we're going to move on to item number six point one on the ordinance discussion. I mean, ordinance presentation, discussion, and potential action. Approve bid award to, let's see, Optimize Investment Partners LLC and authorize the interim city manager to execute a professional services agreement for investment advisory and management services.
Thank you, Mayor. We had put out a RFP for, for investment advisor. And in doing so, we received five proposals and of the five proposals, there were really two really good ones. But we've decided to go with Optimize Investment Partners because of the strategies that they have in place. And they have, I call it aggressive but soft approach in how they strategize on investing idle funds. And with that, I do have Brittany and Robert from Optimize Investments patiently waiting. They do have a presentation that they would like to share with everyone.
Great. Good evening. I'm Robert, the COO of OIP. Brittany, our marketing director and I will be walking you through tonight's presentation. We are a firm of municipal investment advisors with a focus on small to medium-sized municipalities. Council members, we've had great conversations with my and our team relating to the city's most recent RFP for investment advisory services. And we really appreciate the opportunity to spend some time with you this evening. In this presentation, we'll discuss a few key topics. First, we're going to explain the investment required, requirements set by the government code and your investment policy. Second, we will discuss industry best practices and what sets OIP apart. And third, we'll show you how our services fit your needs. Feel free to ask questions along the way. All right, first up, public agency investment requirements. So the California government code has specific rules we're all supposed to follow as fiduciaries, like the prudent person standard, meaning we must look out for the public dollar first and foremost. OIP must put your interests before our own. And it's really about the safety of principle. We're here to add a layer of expertise to what you've been doing all along. Your current investment policy allows for several great investment options. And we're going to be partnering with my over the next couple of weeks to, to really help enhance the policy and add some additional best practice recommendations. So at OIP, we provide end-to-end support to, to help municipalities manage their investments responsibly, strategically, and in full compliance with public fund standards. Our services include investment policy review and adoption. We conduct an annual review of your investment policy and recommend updates to keep it aligned with evolving regulations and market trends. We also have regulatory compliance. We ensure your investments remain compliant with all applicable government codes, with every decision vetted against strict public funds requirements. Cash flow modeling and laddering. Our team performs a detailed historical cash analysis, builds a robust cash flow model specific to your city, and provides monthly updates to support strategic, long-term planning. We also offer education and training, such as what we're doing right now. And really, we offer tailored educational sessions such as this Investments 101 presentation and ongoing support to empower your staff with essential investment knowledge. Liquidity management. We actively manage liquid funds to maximize returns while maintaining the liquidity needed for daily operations. Transparent quarterly reporting. Our clear and concise reports, including council agenda items, staff reports, keep all stakeholders informed about portfolio performance. Together, these services form a complete investment management solution. We go beyond transactions. We partner with you to strengthen your city's financial foundation. And with our deep municipal expertise, we offer valuable insights on broader municipal issues as well. I'm going to hand it over to Brittany for the remaining part of the presentation.
Thank you so much, Robert. Hello, Mayor, council members, and city of Colinga. I'm Brittany and it's my pleasure to present to you. This slide compares typical municipal strategies to OIP's approach. Most small to mid-sized cities use passive investing, which is safe, but exposes the city to interest rate risk and uncertain returns. Active strategies add variety, but often overlook municipal needs. OIP goes further. Building on California Municipal Treasurers Association's best practices, we tailor portfolios using a custom cash flow model and dynamic cash management to create an optimized laddering strategy to improve safety. It's more work, but it delivers better service and stronger investment results. Now I'll highlight the three core advantages that sets OIP apart and directly benefits your city's financial performance. First, active management is at the heart of what we do. We don't use cookie cutter approaches. Instead, we develop tailored investment strategies based on the city's unique cash flow needs. Our customized approach allows us to optimize returns while honoring your liquidity requirements. Next, budgetary resiliency gives the city the financial stability needed for long-term planning. Our optimized laddering strategy locks in the best available rates while keeping your funds productive until they're needed. This approach ensures stability in the city's budgeted interest income so that the city can count on predictable revenue streams year after year. Lastly, reducing interest rate risk protects your portfolio from market volatility. Liquid investments are highly sensitive to market fluctuations, which can create uncertainty in your returns. By locking in rates with appropriate investment tools and strategic time horizons, we can provide you with guaranteed returns, removing the guesswork from your investment income. So while other municipalities that are passive and liquid may need to adjust their interest income budgets downward as rates decline, your city can secure predictable and guaranteed income streams for years to come. So how does what we've presented impact the city of Colinga? Based on the city's June statements and current rates, we estimate total interest earnings of one point three three million in year one and one point two six million in year two, representing a two point four million increase in interest revenue over the next two years. To provide peace of mind, we offer a thirty-day out clause, allowing you to end the partnership at any time if you are not satisfied. That said, we haven't lost a single partnership since our inception. So based upon our conversations with my, here are a few goals and next steps for our new partnership. After contract approval, OIP will conduct a deep dive into your city's existing investment policy and make recommendations based on industry best practices. OIP will then develop a cash flow model and hold a presentation with my and her team to discuss the results. Then we'll analyze the city's existing custody services to ensure best-in-class service levels. So now that we've outlined our goals for the city of Colinga, here's how we'll achieve them through our OIP process. After we affirm the city's existing custody and broker-dealer relationships as previously mentioned, we'll use our comprehensive cash flow model to create a strategic investment plan that outlines the initial portfolio structure. This plan will then be approved by the city. Then we'll meet with my, her team, and the city's broker-dealer to execute the investments according to the approved plan. After that, we perform continuous management by actively monitoring all accounts and provide monthly or twice-monthly recommendations to keep your portfolio optimized. So we've covered a lot today and appreciate your time. On the screen are common questions that we typically hear. And at this point in time, my team and I are ready to address any questions you may have.
Council, have any questions? City treasurer, have any questions?
None at this time.
Okay, I guess I just have a question. I'm sorry if you already answered this. How much, how much risk does this put the city at?
I appreciate you asking that question because when we implement our optimized strategy, we'll actually end up reducing the risk that the city's currently has. Two ways we're going to do that is having a lot of money in your checking account has default risk of your potential bank. Even though that's low, there's still a risk associated with a local bank. And then LEAF is a liquid investment vehicle. It is not intended to be a diversified portfolio. So when we get to diversify your portfolio over time and investment type, we will choose only the safest investments within your city's policy based upon the city's appetite for risk. So that would include items like federal treasuries, federal agencies, CDs, and the JPA pools that are fully collateralized with the cash itself. So we, we hope that there'll be a significant reduction in risk with your cash right now.
And this doesn't have an effect on any current bonds or anything like that that we have out there? Or any type of, you know, current financing models that we may have tied to our pooled cash?
No, sir.
Okay. Any other questions from public or council? Okay, seeing none? What would, what are we looking for today?
I hear approved in a bid, so just I would call a motion for a vote.
And does it need to be a roll call vote?
It doesn't need to be as long as Mercedes can tell where the votes came from. If there's any nays, we'd have to identify them.
Okay. Can I entertain a motion?
I'll motion to approve the bid award to optimize investment partner.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Seeing none? Bid approved. Thank you so much. Appreciate the presentation. Looking forward to making some money. Absolutely looking forward to that. All right. We are going to move forward to item number six point two, which is Discussion Direction Potential Action Regarding Revisions to the City Council Code of Conduct, Councilmember Rights and Duties, Procedures for Filing Fulfilling Vacancies, and City Treasurer Responsibilities.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll start by kind of going through the staff report and then we'll, the city attorney and I can take any questions you guys may have. So tonight, it's recommended the city council review the proposed updates to the city council code of conduct documents, including councilmember rights and duties, procedural rules for filing fulfilling city council vacancies, clarification of the roles and responsibilities of the city treasurer, and then incorporation of best practices aligned with Robert's Rules of Order and the Brown Act. Council is just asked to provide direction on the proposed amendments to, to allow final revisions to be prepared for formal adoption at a future meeting. So this kind of goes back almost to prior to my interim days. In August of 2024, city council discussed the need to revise the code of conduct to include a clear and standardized process for filling vacancies on the council. This was in response to a future agenda item requested by Councilman Vosberg. The council reviewed initial recommendations prior, provided by the city attorney and directed staff to draft additional language that, one, established application timelines, defined the interview procedures, and then described council deliberation and voting protocols for candidate appointments. Additionally, Mayor Vosberg requested an agenda item to further examine the rights and duties of council members in other elected positions and ensure the council's procedures are consistent with Robert's Rules of Order, the Brown Act, and overall governments, governance efficiency. The city attorney has reviewed these items and provided supporting documents in draft language addressing the councilmember rights and limitations, Brown Act compliance for public meetings and clarification on legal functions, separation between the elected city treasurer and the appointed finance director. So all the proposed language updates have been incorporated into the draft documents. And then we'll put it into a final report once we consolidate it. So there is a document that actually has blue lines on it, which I gave you hard copies. For some reason, when the document was uploaded, I don't know if it did, if there was an autocorrect that on the Word document before it was uploaded. But you do have the last two pages of that draft document that shows some of the changes regarding the taking actions on items. I think it was originally called motions. So that language has been updated for the council to review. And then there's also a few other items that were requested by Mayor Vosberg. Was the councilmember discussion comments for members of the public who completed comment cards, council motion, and council action. That was requested to be removed and that is in section five. I think it's five A two under the council rules of procedure. And then the, in addition- And then the, in addition, and number six was the announcements, was to add the treasurer's announcements to the agenda. I did notice that it said that you had mayor's announcements stricken. Did you want that removed, or did you want just the treasurer's announcements added?
Just the treasurer's amounts, announcements added to that.
And then I think those were the only two additional changes beyond the, the blue writing. So the consult, basically the culmination of all the documents there are included. There's also additional information regarding the city treasurer versus the finance director. This was requested by the council to analyze those two functions and coordinate that. Did you want to go ahead and cover that? Okay.
Yeah, I can jump in. So just as a little bit of background. So me and my firm, we represent nine cities, and Colinga is the only one with the elected treasurer. And where, through our research, where I think that came from was, it was just a, you know, 70 years ago, it was just a simpler time. And the state through that course of time has, you know, regulated everything, including municipal finance. And so it became such a burden to where the, a normal person could not, you know, regularly do that job. And so cities began hiring, you know, professional finance directors to do that and make sure everything's in compliance. And it's, I'm not saying that to say you don't, you can't have an elected treasurer. Just trying to give you the history of how this kind of developed. And so in addition, we have the municipal code, which says that the treasurer should not be doing duties of the finance person. And so when we really looked at it, we were trying to figure out, okay, what, what is there that, that the treasurer should be doing? You know, there's, there's not a clear delineation in the code of what they should be doing. It just says that that person shouldn't be doing whatever the finance director's doing. And so as it's indicated in the staff report, it really comes down to two things that the treasurer can do. And they both involve oversight, which makes a lot of sense. Just making sure that you have another set of eyes on what's going on. And it comes down to monthly reports. There's a government code 41004 that the monthly reports apply to. And annual statements, which government code 53646 applies to. And so those are some key roles that the treasurer can really play in oversight and just helping out, giving another set of eyes. That obviously has to be done in conjunction with the finance director because the finance director has the data. So they, they do work kind of in tandem to create those reports and, and those oversight functions. If the council does want to move forward, as Sean mentioned, we did prepare an ordinance revision to make it more clear that, what that role actually is today. And you're not asking to approve that tonight, but it's, it's there for your review.
Can, can you go into just a little bit of depth of what the exactness would be of the, of the oversight? Of, I know one of them is the, you know, the, the investment policy, right?
Mm-hmm. That, that's the annual statement.
And that's something that we heard tonight. That would be, would that be binding to that type of stuff?
Yeah, so what, what I really envision is, you know, the, the data being shared, the finance director working with the treasurer for the monthly reports, ensuring compliance that, and the city manager as well, making sure that those monthly reports, that she's, the current treasurer is, signs off on them, that they're accurate. Not that necessarily there's, you know, a, a different approach, but that they're correct. Like what's being presented by Mai in this example is correct. That the data's there, that the data supports it. The second thing is the annual statement of the investment policy, which would include things like this, or the previous agenda item. And just having an understanding that, you know, where the money is being invested, how it's being invested, and that she agrees that that is what's occurring. Because Mai on a day-to-day basis is going to be reviewing those things and making sure it's, you know, being handled correctly. But then also, you know, the treasurer has the oversight of that and, and double-checking it essentially. That's, that's how it's working.
So I have a question pertaining to that. So you said for accuracy. How, we want to kind of specify, like, how will she get access? Or how will the treasurer get access to the documentation? And what documentation, right? What, what will the process be so that we can make sure that, you know, we, we respect city staff, but we also respect the city treasurer position at the same time to be able to give that information to the council?
Yeah, so I, I really view it as more of an audit type of function, right? In an audit, the auditors are, when we, you know, when we do our third-party auditing, they're not necessarily telling the city that the numbers are correct. They're telling the city that the processes that are set up have been followed, right? They don't go back and check every invoice that we've had throughout the year. They don't go back and check every check that we've issued, every credit card statement. That's not their function. They are doing it on a very high, high level and looking for things in, in our system and processes that could lead to different outcomes, right? So that, that could lead to things that could make us unsure if the budget is correct, or, you know, things, things like that. And so I view it very similarly. The treasurer's not going to necessarily go back and double-check every single piece of data. But she should be following the process, right? Is there, I don't know if I'd give a great example of that, but the, the, on the annual statement, you know, the treasurer would look and verify, okay, you know, are the folks that came up on the prior agenda item, you know, what are they reporting to us? And is that correct? And is that being reflected in the annual statement that that is correct, right? What are we earning in LEAF, which might come from Mai, for example? And is all the data there to make sense, right? All the pieces going together? It's not necessarily a double check down to the penny of every single dollar amount because it's just, it's impractical to do that. But it's having another set of eyes that, yeah, this makes sense. The, the processes are there and it's flowing and it looks correct.
So are, is this proposing that section 2.1504, monthly financial reporting? That that would be included into this?
Yes.
Yes. And so it says, "The treasurer shall prepare a monthly report and accounting of all receipts, disbursements, and fund balances as required by government code 41004. Any information needed by the city treasurer from the city records to complete this report shall be obtained through the finance director or city manager. The report may be a compilation of other reports prepared for by the city." And then it goes into saying, "Prior to submission, city clerk and council, the monthly report shall be reviewed and signed off by the city treasurer, the city manager, and the finance director at the time the treasurer delivers a monthly report to the city clerk, as recovered by government code 41104, and a copy of the report." This seems to be like something that I, I think that we're interested in, in seeing done. And I mean, me personally, I think this is a, a good, a good task. Obviously, we, we want to get the input of the current city treasurer on what she feels about this. Because from what I'm looking at, these are really the two things. The monthly financial reporting, which would be a monthly duty, correct?
Correct.
And then the, the investment policy, which would be an annual duty, which I see the investment policy as a huge deal because I, you know, I, I have always reserves on, hey, we're going to put our, our largest asset pooled cash up to, you know, a company to work with. And, you know, we want to make sure that, that some, that that's oversight. And I know the finance director does a lot of that as well. But I always like a, a third, you know, a watchdog. And I think that's what the treasurer, my personal opinion, of what the treasurer position. I don't know since I wasn't here when it was created, but I can envision why it would have been created because people wanted that. And I know that we've, I've looked for the ballot language myself. I could not find it. Were you able to find any ballot language or anything on that? I know that-
On the, on the original? No.
No.
Yeah.
So I guess I'll open this up for, you know, counsel, if anyone has any questions. And then let's ask also to get the input from the city treasurer. And I, I'd suggest like that we just take these individual items specifically, that way that we can get through this. And we'll just work on them individually. And so like we'll work on, to begin with, the monthly financial reporting. And then we'll move on to the investment policy, and then we'll move on to if there's any other items that council wants to see input into this as well. And I think that that would be a good way to address if, if council's okay with that. And so if there's no objections to that, if we could just discuss if everyone's okay with monthly financial reporting? And if they want to add or remove anything to that, or discuss anything with that?
Mai might be have a question too.
Oh, and we'll include the finance director as well, of course. But we'll start with counsel.
I think it sounds pretty good. It's, it's, it's holding the city more accountable now. It makes it easier for the citizens to hold the city accountable, to make sure that things are getting done their correct way.
And that's not saying that they're not being done the correct way. It's just like an oversight.
Just adds to it. Now there's more.
And I think it really pinpoints on what the position, because there's a lot of things in that position that were recognized by the state, but then that last line says anything not done by the finance department. But of course, we want to give that position some respect. And, and we want to give it some oversight capabilities because I think that's why it was created.
We just, we just chose an investment company. Would she be involved, or the treasurer be involved in something like that in the future? Like making these decisions, vetting these out to present that information?
No.
Because I would have liked to have something like that, making this decision, because I'm not a treasurer.
And what level are you, were you requesting for that? Are you just talking about oversight, like looking over it? Are you talking about being involved in the process?
Vetting the company for the investments and, and that type of stuff. Is that, is that in this?
It's, it's not in it now. It's, it's, the only thing that would be related to that is the oversight of the annual statement of the investments. And so if you wanted to add something like that, we'd, we'd have to add it.
So it has nothing to do with, like, what we did choosing a new investor?
It's essentially reviewing the, the annual-
Just reviewing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Kind of like the oversight portion of it, not really the staff day-to-day portion of it. Which I think adds kind of to that separation that, you know, in other documents that council, that, you know, there's, there's state law to, to dictate some of that stuff, if I'm correct. But also to formalize it to council so that we know, because a lot of times we don't even know, right? Like we're worse, like I've talked to council people before and I'm like, sure we could do that? Like, yeah. So we just want to formalize this stuff and put it into, into here. Not trying to take away our rights or our abilities to do things, but-
No, exactly, exactly. And, and the only concern that I would have is that there's a clear and defined way to access the information, where you're not putting her in a bad position or putting employees in a bad position, like we've discussed in the code of conduct for the, for the council. I, I don't, I don't know if that's defined or will be defined.
I would defer to Mai to kind of explain what the practicality of the monthly report would be and what Mai would be able to provide in terms of, I mean, it's going to be reports basically coming from our system. It's the same thing with the annual report, is that we're going to, that report will be provided, you know, to the treasurer. She'd be able to review it and-
Like on a monthly basis? It'd be, it'd be scheduled and understood?
But the, the investment side, it would be annually.
I would like to clarify. The financial report, we kind of use it a little vaguely in general, but financial reporting is not like the monthly reports that I provide. The, the monthly report that I believe that this code is referring to is what we call the treasurer's report. And that report is specific to only investments. And I believe that is why the, the investment policy is a part of it. And to elaborate on what Mario stated about the oversight is that when we do our day-to-day work, where we're reconciling the account, making sure that we have recorded the fundings, like the interest earned into our GL, that is something that we do on a monthly daily process. So the oversight would be for the city treasurer to look at the documentation that our new investment company will provide and to verify and validate that what we are recording into our financial or GL are, are accurate. That's what I believe what it is.
So I appreciate your information on that. I think that's not in line with what is here, though. In 2.1504, it says, "The city treasurer shall prepare a monthly report and accounting of all receipts, disbursements, and fund balances as required by the government code." So I think that we have two separate things going on. One of them is that, and then the other one is the investment policy, which would be the annual report. Am I correct?
Yeah, so that, that language, the receipts, disbursements, and fund balances, that's a government code 41004. That's what is required by that code.
And, and we do do that. I do, my department and I, we do do that. That's, so if we go to item, it's here. So the check register is the disbursement. So my department currently does that. The fund balance and the monthly quarter reports, I do that too. My department does that too.
So there, yeah, there, there may not be a difference, right? As, that's why it's written in there as you can use existing reports.
So would it be an, an issue to have her present those reports? You know, as a, an oversight, not as a redoing of the work, obviously, you're already doing the work. But if we had her doing it as an oversight, that means that you would just be handing her over those reports. She would be presenting them. And then obviously, like, as if we could go into the check balance and look ourselves, which a lot of times, you know, we skim it because there's a lot to go over it. But if we gave that oversight to the treasurer, then that would be a duty that she could do. And then if she had, you know, some kind of idea like, hey, something's not correct in here, she could work with you and say, hey, you know, I, I see that there's a discrepancy here, or I'm wondering why. Because amazingly enough, recently, we have had citizens wondering about the check register. We've had people asking, why are there two and three things of the same item in there? And of course, many of us who have asked the questions understand why, right? We get that. But I think for oversight, for a city treasurer, that might add some, you know, for the citizens to say, okay, well, we have someone looking over this. I don't know. That's just my personal opinion. But asking of you, would that be an issue if we allowed her to, or we allowed the city treasurer position as an oversight to present those reports?
She can present these, and so if she's going to present it, I just need to know if my staff needs to prepare it. Or we can provide her the reports and she can prepare it herself.
Yes. So I would envision if these are reports that, that the finance director's always, already doing, they, they just need to be compiled, right?
Yeah, we just run it.
Correct. Not, not that, again, in more of an oversight, it's not that the treasurer is going to start looking through receipts and making sure every single check it matches up. Whether, it's, it's really just an oversight. Does, do those documents match up? Do they make sense from one next, from one month to the next and internally?
Well, and I think that's a very needed service because looking through the check register and other documents is a lot. It's a lot of work for us and, and we're the oversight on that right now. I mean, it comes to us and we're asked to approve it, you know? So I wouldn't mind having another set of eyes, like someone that, hey, it's their job duty. They're doing this, you know?
And that still brings me back to the question. Is, is there going to be a defined method for her to access this data without confusion? How's it going to be done? Is it through the city manager, or is it directly through?
And that's, that's kind of, I mean, that's going to be an internal function on how we process, how we disseminate that information. I don't know if it needs to be in here, so it's, it's very clear in terms of what is provided?
I, I would probably do it, like, if the council wants to do something like this and add it, add these couple of sections as an ordinance, I'd probably do it as, as a separate policy of the city manager. So because that's always going to change, I mean, that, that could change from month to month, like on when the treasurer needs those reports to get to the council on time. And so staff probably needs a little bit of flexibility, so I would do that as like an admin policy.
Request them in, and get them in a timely manner without putting-
So Mai and I can get together and we can kind of see what the internal procedure would be based on timelines? Because based on when the check register is actually issued, timing-wise of when it gets on the agenda, we'd have to look at currently, what's that lead time before it gets on the agenda compared to when it would be provided to the treasurer? Just based on the monthly, on month ends and what the time difference is and what the parameters are of the check register, you know, when we run a report for a fund balance, because that balance might be different by the time the meeting comes because we've spent money since then. So we can talk internally, kind of look at a process. Mai's really good about procedures, so we can throw that together and see. Because my, my only thing is I don't want to take up too much of a staff time with this role. I think that information can be provided. But I think that it, it needs to be disseminated and be able to be analyzed, but also discussed too. To make sure that, you know, all the qualified people are reviewing those documents. but also discussed too, um, to make sure that, you know, all the qualified people are reviewing those documents.
What, um, do you guys care if I open it up to the city treasurer and ask her an opinion? Uh, we're just talking right this second about the, um, uh, the monthly financial reporting. And then we'll talk about the investment policy next. That way we can kind of drill down on these individually. Sorry to put you on the spot, but if you have any, uh, if you, you're okay with it, then we could do it like that if you want to add or remove something.
Okay, so I'm, I'm very confused. Let me say that.
Okay.
Um, I want clarification on the response, the rights and responsibilities of city treasurer in California. Uh, five, five, four, one, zero, zero, one, and those going down the list first of all. Second of all, um, I need clarity on, first of all, I'm very confused and I've been confused for over four years. Um, I asked for numbers and I don't, I don't have access to that. Um, I've asked for AR reports. I, I don't have access to that. I haven't been given that. I'm not on the bank account. There's just things that, um, haven't transpired that are very frustrating. And when I ask for these things, I don't ask for them just because I'm asking for them. It's because I'm constantly inverting myself to try to be involved and understand what I'm supposed, supposed to be doing. And as a treasurer, as an elected official, um, my interest is the, of the citizens' community. And that being said, I feel like I have to look out for their best interest. And part of doing that is understanding the finances and things of that nature. Um, I've never gotten any of the reports I've asked for, ever. Um, I do feel like I'm not, I don't feel that I'm valued as far as it being a treasurer here and I'm not wanted. And that goes a long way with what I'm saying. And I don't ask for these things. Again, I've asked for them because I've seen neglect and abuse. I, I, I continue to see things that happen where things are brought to council and everything's wonderful and it's made to seem like it's all great and wonderful, but in fact, there's things that are going on behind the scenes that don't jive with that. And so, um, if I'm gonna be doing reports, and I knew I was supposed to be giving a report to the council, but I was told a long time ago that, um, your job here is to not be heard or seen basically. And, um, I give a, and this wasn't from my, this was from the previous finance director. I give a report and just take it from me and hand it to them. And I refused. I said, I won't do that because that wasn't in the interest of the citizens and I wasn't gonna do that. So any, it has to be very clear if I'm gonna be doing my report that I've been supposed to be doing all along, that I do have the access to the things I need and it's very clear and that I, um, you know, I'm not just disre, I'm, I'm constantly disregarded and, and not included. And so it's very frustrating. And so I want to be very clear about everything.
So I, I think, um, I, I sympathize with your frustration. And I, I've, uh, this is something that we've been working on for a hot second with the, you know, intern city manager, uh, trying to get this, uh, with the city attorney, trying to figure out, you know, the differences in between the, the past ordinance and what the expectations of the, um, uh, city treasurer position uh, compared to finance. Um, and I think that's one of the reasons it's taken a, a little while to figure out is looking at all these things of the creations and functions, uh, that we have. Uh, and then looking at that very last line where it says, um, "The city treasurer shall not perform any function of the finance director, but shall have the oversight and reporting duties." And so I think what, what we're trying to figure out here is exactly what you want, which is how, how can we, uh, get you the, the, the information that you need in order to, uh, have that oversight, you know, onto, onto the city? And to pinpoint it to where that you know that what you're doing is effective and it is in the best interest of the city. And then it doesn't include a lot of the other stuff that may be included in the past, but doesn't include in the future because now we have a, a finance director doing those, those duties. And so, um, you know, I, I want to make sure that you're involved in this process the entire way. Uh, you're our current, uh, you know, um, treasurer. And I've seen treasurers in the past that most of them have done not even the bare minimum. You know, so, and I know that you want to get involved and so I think that's the reason that this item, uh, was brought forward. And I, and I'm pretty sure the council, uh, has an interest in making sure that we have someone to watch over, uh, the investments and also to watch over, uh, the, the stuff that comes through, um, you know, on the check register and things of that nature. Uh, but we also have to be aware of the law and the things that we can do and that like, that, you know, as a council member, I would love to get into a lot of things of the, the city, but you know, I, I can't because there's the personnel rules and there's the separation in between, you know, those different things. And I think we've all had little learning curves on this, which is kind of why in the next section, when we talk about, we're gonna limit, uh, we're going to formalize limiting what council can do as well. Because we don't want, we want to just formalize it so we understand it. And so, um, that being said, uh, you know, I think most of this revolves around the, the monthly financial reporting and, um, and the investment policy. If you'd like to see more than that, uh, put into there, you know, we, we can discuss it. Like, we're not gonna make a formal decision tonight. We're gonna come back with something. Uh, but this is the time that we're gonna just discuss and just figure out like, hey, where can, where can we compromise? Uh, you know, to make sure that the, the public gets what they need and the, the city also is, you know, being able to function, um, at a level that, that they feel comfortable with as well. So. Um, as far as clarity on the, on the position, um, or on this as it's written, um, Mario, do you have some type of clarity of exactly, you know, what the, uh, monthly financial reporting would look like?
Um, not necessarily the format, but the requirements are in the government code. So it's, it's really, um, it's really an accounting of the receipts, dispersments and fund balances. That's what has to be in the monthly report.
And that's for the first section. That's for monthly, uh, financial reporting. And this would be done exactly, I mean, like you guys would have to come up with a process, correct? So the city, uh, um, would work on coming up with a process to make that happen, to get her the information to be able to present that, correct?
Right. There's, there's no guidance in the government code in the law that says, hey, it should look like this or it needs to have these columns or anything like that. We have to do that internally.
Okay. So could we make it to where that we're going to agree for this section? And that we are going to have a policy before we, uh, uh, put this in the code, that we have a policy brought back that, uh, the treasurer could understand and the council could understand? That way that when we do agree to this, that there is a clear direction uh, on exactly what information and how she is gonna obtain this information? Does that sound good to everybody?
Like a written procedure?
Right. Like a written procedure so that she knows how she can get the information and that the city knows that they, they are gonna be obligated to give this information at the same time. Is that, uh, acceptable to you?
Yes.
Yeah.
But I have a couple of questions, please.
Absolutely, ask.
Um, I read here in the information that was provided that, um, the city treasurer is the custodian of all, um, excuse me, treasurer is the custodian of all funds and is responsible for their safekeeping. What does, what does that mean?
Um, I mean, I guess ultimately it, it means that you have the responsibility, that, that's your function as a located treasurer, so long as it doesn't conflict with something that's already been assigned to the finance director.
Okay.
I think that's where some of that comes into play is that, like you talked about, this was, this state statute was, was established seventy years ago. And so, yeah, that's a, that's a pretty broad comment to main statement in a government code section where you may not have had finance directors, um, in these agencies. I think now that you've got that, there's, I think there's a reason why there's some of this information in here about the finance director duties. There's not, if there's something that the finance director doesn't do, that would be ultimately the responsibility of the treasurer if in fact it falls under that code. I think that's why this is really narrowed down quite a bit to where we're at now. Um, it's just trying to find that reasonable approach where there's no, you know, redundancy of, 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 of what's being done. Because oversight's a little bit different than just looking at, you know, trying to analyze, being involved in kind of, kind of the, the day-to-day functions of the, uh, of the finance department. Uh, and so I think that's where this is really narrowed down. So there's a lot of broad strokes in the state and the government code, but from my understanding, you know, you read through it, that's basically, when you start, when the city attorney did the analysis of, of the two different positions, that's why it was narrowed down because a lot of the functions in the, in the, the government code were, are being done by the finance director.
Well, one thing that, that I, I would, myself personally, and I don't know how much work this takes to do, but I know that one thing that our, our city treasurer was interested in, in understanding, uh, is, uh, I think it's somewhat related to fund balances is in understanding our AR reports of how much money we are owed and how much that is. And I think that that is a fund balance. Uh, an AR fund is a fund and it does have a balance to it. And, and it's important. It's important to council to understand where we are in debt, how much people owe us and how much, uh, those aging reports are and how far they are out. Now, I don't know how far that, that goes in detail to it as in the treasurer, uh, ability to get that. But what, when reporting on that fund balance, what that does is, in my personal opinion, is that puts that on our radar. It says, okay, we see these fund balances and we don't see them going down. We see them going up and we don't see any progress on those fund balances. And then that, that can spawn questions. Am, am I correct on that? Can that be included into there to where? And, uh, does that, you know, add extra work or is that something that you can do to put that in there to the fund balance? Uh, I'm talking to the, uh, to finance director at the moment. Sorry about that. I'm, we're just trying to get through this.
Sorry. Can you say that again?
Um, so one of the, one of the things that she's interested in is the AR, or the AR fund balances. So when, in the, in the fin, monthly financial reporting, it references, uh, of all receipts, dispersments and fund balances. And what we're wondering is, is that will she have access to the AR fund balance?
So in, in AR, um, AR is not, um, it's different than what a fund balance is. Um, and, and AR is just basically anything that we have outstanding. Fund balance is more of what we bring in as, as revenue and what we expend over, uh, within the fiscal year. However, it's a rolling balance of all assets and liabilities. And so it does include it in there, but it is two different things. So if she wants the information in regards to accounts receivable, then we can give her a list of that. But it is not fund balance. I just want to keep those separate.
Okay, but you could give her the balance of the accounts receivable so that we would know, like that kind of stuff. I think that's, that is, um, you know, a lot of these things, I, I know that the internals to the city, that, you know, my personal opinion is, you know, a lot of that stuff isn't like, hey, let's go and put that information out to the public. But I do think that sometimes that the public has an interest in understanding where we're at with those. And I think that city treasurer has an interest in making sure the public understands that. Uh, because and, and, and I know the council, we're, I mean, at least I am interested in understanding that too, to make sure that, not that you're not doing what you're supposed to, but to, for us to understand, you know, what are those, uh, what are those balances on those accounts, you know, just so that we, we can make good decisions. Um, and that's stuff that isn't necessarily on our radar. So is everyone okay with that? Um, if we can include that as well into that? So if we included that into that and then, uh, would the treasurer be okay if we brought back a policy, uh, or maybe a, a?
Procedure.
A procedure. And then we include this, uh, on the, when we, when we approve this, because we aren't approving this tonight, just from what I understand. Um, w- w- would that be acceptable to the treasurer as well?
Yes.
Okay.
And may I still ask for clarification on some of these items that were provided?
Yeah.
Um, compliance and financial laws. The treasurer must comply with all state laws regarding the deposit securing and handling of public and trust funds. Um, I'd like some clarification on that. And then the dispersment funds reported in accountant. And then, um, tax licenses, fees, collections. And then the appointment of deputies. The treasurer may appoint deputies as an, and is responsible for their actions.
So I, I don't know, um, if I can give you any more clarification on what those mean. Are you asking whether you should be doing those?
No, I want to know how I, I want to know, okay, so when I'm reading this stuff, it, it's, it's, it indicates to me that somehow I'm supposed to be involved in this stuff. And I never want to come to a, a situation where I'm not doing my part or I have to answer the public that I'm not doing my part. And that is my concern. And so I want clarification on those things. And I want to be doing what I'm supposed to be doing. And how I'm understanding the first part that you spoke about, um, when I, when I asked about the custodian of all city funds, I wanted to be clear that, so if we go bankrupt, that falls on my shoulders, right? Because I was the caretaker of that, right?
No, it does not.
Okay.
No. So the only two things that you should be doing per our, my analysis is oversight of the monthly reports and the annual investment report.
So what is this, um, California government code?
Okay, so that was what I had mentioned in the beginning. The code sets out all the, the treasurer responsibilities. The municipal code then says, you don't need to do anything that the finance director is doing. And the finance director is doing all of those things that we mentioned in the government code, except for the monthly statements and the annual investment report. So that's what you're, it lists out at least, you know, ten different things that the treasurer is supposed to be doing. But each one of those things, except for two of them, ends up getting crossed off because the fin, the finance director has already been assigned to do them.
Okay.
Can I ask one thing? Um, so with the two items that have been identified on here, um, these are basically reports. Um, what I kind of maybe would like to see is if i- i- it's an oversight. I mean, if there's oversight is what the council's looking for, is how do we establish a procedure that creates the oversight? Because I think, you know, the finance director can do these other things, right? That, if that's something the council wants, that could be her, that's her duty, right? And so I think it's, it's a idea of a report that's printed and provided to council, which can measly be done by the finance director. How do we establish, where, where does the oversight come in?
So I think the idea is, is that, like, right now, we have the oversight of the check register, uh, being done to council. But the check register is quite a duty to look over the entire thing. And I think what we're saying is, is that we would like that stuff, the, the actual duty of itself to be bound to the treasurer. So the treasurer looks over that stuff. Not that we won't, it can be included, but we would like her to actually look after it and say, hey, I see some things on, so that when she presents it, if she sees things on there that she does, that she's, doesn't understand, she can reach back out to the finance director, she can reach out to the city manager, further understand them. And then she can pres, if, if there's a, a, something that she needs to present to the public or to the council that she can do that, that way we understand it. Because a lot of times, you know, I, I think this is like, we have a, a, an elected position and there was this broad scope of stuff on here. And we're trying to take that broad scope of stuff down and make it something manageable. And it's something that fits into, uh, something that's not gonna, uh, you know, take too much staff time. And it's also going to provide that oversight, i- if I'm correct, uh.
Well, I feel like that she was elected to do something.
Yeah.
Not to sit in that chair during meetings quietly and then leave. I mean, there's obviously a purpose for that position. People voted on that, so. Uh, y- you can't just set her aside because somebody else is doing it. I mean, that's like, that's like telling the voters, you don't get what you voted for, in my mind. So, yeah, she needs to have some access, I would say. It's, i- in trying to whittle it down to next to nothing because, uh, because a hired, uh, uh, employee is doing it is kind of, uh, somehow undoing the whole electoral process for me. I, I don't understand it. Why have the position if, if she's not gonna have any function, any real function?
Yeah, I agree because also, uh, one of the other things I'm, that I want to talk about is compensation. I want the tr, city treasurer to be compensated as the rest of the council is. And I think that she, yes, she's a, a member of, of the council. She's an elected position. And I also want to make sure that anytime that, um, you know, things go out to be in, people invited, that our city treasurer is invited to. Um, I think it's the respect of the position and, um, uh, as we've stated before, if we didn't want the position, we would, uh, choose to put it back to the voters because I think that's the only way you can do that and decide like we did with the city clerk that we weren't gonna have one. But if we're gonna decide to move forward and keep the position, we should keep the respect of that position. And I think that this is a, a nice compromise. So the, the city treasurer understands what, that, what she is, uh, expected to do. And it also puts her to, and I think, and I don't think this is a thing to where it's gonna be a negative thing toward the city. I think that there's always something the city can, you know, it's just like us. When we look at something, we look at the check register or something like that, you know, we can, we do. When we look at something, we look at the check register or something like that, you know, we can, we do say things sometimes that, you know, the, the city kinda cringes on like, oh, my goodness, this is, but it's what we do for the public, you know? We're the eyes and ears of the public and that's what she's elected to do and that's what we're elected to do. It's not to make, you know, staff look bad and it's not to put the city in a bad light. And, and I just want to make, you know, sure that that's, that's not the case, you know?
Yeah, we can put together a procedure.
Is everyone okay with that? Yeah, are you okay with that, city treasurer?
I agree.
And finance director?
Yes.
Okay. And then as far as the investment policy, I think that's pretty, you know, can you guys work on a procedure for that as well?
Yeah, I think it's basically, it's different reports, but same function.
Right, and then we can bring that back and agree on that so that we have a function, so we have a process, came up with by the city and agreed with us and the finance director. And that way, we finally put this bad boy to bed. And we're like, hey, we, we know what the, the, the stuff is and we know what we're gonna do.
Yes, and how she's gonna access that information, who she's gonna go to, I don't know, it needs to be laid out, I think.
Yeah, we'll put it, we'll put in the procedures.
Yes.
Okay. All right, and then the only other thing that, that I personally have on this, which if anybody else, I mean, I'm looking at this one document, Article Five City Treasurer, I would like to agree that we also compensate the city treasurer as the rest of us are compensated. You guys are on the volunteer route, I don't understand that.
Yeah, remember, three, three of us up here don't get paid. So, just saying.
For us that are getting somewhat compensated.
I can tell you with the price of food going up, anytime I'm doing treasurer work and takes somebody to lunch, it costs me more than whatever, just for one lunch.
So, are we all in agreeance that they can bring back that too in the, in the, yeah?
No, I got a question. She just mentioned something, when she goes out to lunch on certain business stuff with, with her position, is she going to be paid back with receipt or is that just for council?
I mean, I don't ever, I mean, if, if she's in a function that's.
If she needs to.
Yeah, if she's in a function from the, the city, a city thing, I don't see an issue with that. I mean, you know, we rarely go to things that are outside of the scope. But like, let's say we're going to an event and she's going to, she should submit receipts if, you know, the League of Cities or wherever. You know, I believe that, you know, I don't think I've ever submitted a receipt except for gas if I. Mileage for something, but I, I don't have an issue with that. I mean, I think that, that if it becomes an issue, you know, we can, not just for the treasurer position, but for all of us, there's oversight on that. I think the treasurer position will be the oversight, they'll be looking at that, so is, is everyone okay with that?
I'm not sure I understand what that is. Equal to us, to what we can do, same thing. You go to a bed, you get your mileage and any other expenses, if you want to.
We have, we have a reimbursement policy, so it applies to, yeah.
But I want to make sure she's involved.
We would just default to that.
Okay. All right, so we'll have something brought back on the treasurer's section then. Just taking this apart and like looking at it individually, I looked at the code of conduct, which is the council section, that kind of delineates some of the things that, you know, council's responsibilities, roles, and then some of the, of the things that are put in, that are more just like notice that like, hey, when somebody has a question about whether or not they should or could do something, that it's in writing. It's not that, I mean, I don't see that it's an end-all. I mean, obviously, the code of conduct is there, we want people to follow it, but, you know, it doesn't always work like that, right? I mean, we try, we try our best, I mean, that's what we try and govern on, you know, but, yeah.
Is all of this new and being added or is this supposed to be redlined?
It's not the red, it was a separate document, it wasn't the red line. It was the, I think you put additional document for, it was the appointment process of committees and commissions.
Yeah, that, well, that whole section's.
That's all new, right?
That's all new.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sorry.
So, it, I think it just depends, I can't, I can't tell you for sure, but like definitely the appointment process for council committees, like that whole thing is new. There's nothing redlined because it doesn't exist. It's all new.
You create all this.
So, is all of this?
Yeah.
So, can I make a suggestion? Can I make a suggestion that we get this, we get this redlined and then we bring it back? And we'll also discuss further on that issue, that way we can completely understand what we're looking at?
Consolidate everything.
Yeah, and if anybody has any suggestions right now that you'd like to put into there without seeing a red line, we could do that. I, I only have one suggestion, it's on the voting section. I like the processes that city attorney put together. I think to simplify the voting process, there's a way that they use at council governments that just makes it super simple. In this process that we have in front of us, a couple of different options. One of them is that if we have, you know, that we give everyone the, the, the idea that, hey, we're gonna put this out to the public and then we're going to allow a certain amount of time and then we're gonna bring people back. And then if they get a motion, then we would vote on those. And that there would be a way to, to decide who would be getting to vote on first. So that if it went around the table, for instance, a planning commissioner or something like that, if you had three or four candidates, that we would make the motion based on like them drawing out of a hat. And then whoever got the first number, that would be the first motion on the table. I would like to see actually a simplified method and just up for discussion, is that when it comes to voting at the council governments, we just go around the table and each person makes one vote. And then at the end, whoever has the most votes wins. And then, so there's no need for somebody saying, hey, I didn't have a fair shot because they got to go first or this, this and this. So, like, for instance, if Chuck was up there and we're, and let's say Chuck and Richard and a couple of other people were up there, it would come to us and after we, you know, heard from them, then we would say, okay, well, you, you can even skip the nomination stage, you don't even need to do that. You can just go right with, well, who do you want to vote for? And we can vote.
So, in, in.
You're limited on two or three.
Yeah, so that's, I think that's probably the only question is, if you do it that way, say you have three candidates and the first, the mayor and the vice mayor vote for somebody, Ramirez votes for somebody, Chandler and, and Hitchcock vote for somebody else. So, number one, you have a tie, but, but you also only have two people voting for possibly that person.
Well, I don't, I mean, you're talking about if we had a tie as if we didn't have enough people here?
No, I'm saying, so say, say here, I'll give you a really good example. So, say you had four candidates for a planning commission. The mayor, vice mayor vote for somebody, want the same person, and everybody else votes for one of the other people. So, the person who's gonna win only has two affirmative votes from the council, which is, I mean, you could do it that way, but then a majority of the council hasn't even voted for that person.
Right, so I think what we've done in the, in the past of that is then you take the top two vote getters and you vote again.
Oh, you want to do like a ranked choice voting, look at you.
Well, that, that kind of restricts us when we get three new ones that are coming in that have never spent.
I'm just putting up items for, for, for discussion, however you guys want to do it is fine by me. I just don't really like the idea that, that we have the idea that someone's gonna pick a name out of a hat and then they get to go first, and I think it just. We could do that, a motion second and a vote, but.
It makes it hard when you have three new council members coming in that have no clue of what's going on and they're not eligible for those positions, so those two are. Now, you just gotta figure out who's gonna do what. So, that might be a, I don't know if that's gonna be an issue or not.
Well, and the other thing that I, that I don't like is, and I just personally, it just sucks that you bring these folks here and you, you know, you may get a vote, they, you may have someone up here that wants to vote for them. But then, once the first person gets a majority, it's over. And that person doesn't even get a hear if someone wanted to vote for them. Whereas if we all took a vote, then they would know, hey, this person wanted to vote for me. And then the others, you know, we had one person vote for this person, fourth person vote for the other, and that obviously that person lost, but at least they know that they got a vote, you know? So, I don't know, I'm just thinking about how we could make it a little bit to where that the people that have come up here that they get, that they think that they got more of a fair shot than, hey, I just came up here and, like, we've had a couple of people make the comment before that they did all the work, came up here and then you guys already had it decided and they didn't even get, you know, to move forward.
That's what they said, but that may not be what happened.
No, it may not be what happened, I'm just trying to give a, no, I'm just, no, I get you. I'm just trying to give a, to make it a little bit, a different process. But I, I, you know what, I'm not even trying, I'm just giving an option.
Is there a way that you can get us a couple of different ways before we have to try to do a mayor-at-large? Because I think that's where he's going to, is trying to get a mayor-at-large eventually. So, that way the citizens can vote instead of the council. I think that's what he's trying, can you check on the options?
He's talking about mayor-at-large now?
Yeah, that's, that's what it sounds like.
No, 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 no. No, I'm talking, I'm only talking about like if, for instance, if we're appointing somebody. So, like, let's say that there's, that we lose a council member, right? Like, let's say that, that I have to resign. And let's say that there's four people left, and even five actually, because technically the person that's resigning can still vote for their replacement. No, I'm just saying that, like, in order to make that process better, not anything to do with the public side, just to, we do with our side, so that when we're out, when we're voting for someone to make a replacement or when we're voting for a planning commissioner, when those seats come open, that it just makes it a little bit different. We don't have to change it, I was just making a suggestion. Because a lot of times people think that, that the process is, is not fair when.
Excuse me, sorry.
Yeah, no, go for it.
When someone motions and can someone else motion someone else?
You can.
We can all, we can all fight motion each other.
But then which one goes first? That's the issue.
Well, that would be up to city clerk to ask for a second.
That's what I'm trying to get around, that's what I'm trying to get around, because then sometimes you want to, someone just wants to jump. Right, but it, but it's been done before where someone's motioned and seconded and everyone's kind of like caught off guard, like, what's happened?
And you're thinking that the second one may have gotten seconded?
I'm just thinking that if you're sitting out there in the public, that you're like, to, to thinking to yourself that you didn't even have a shot.
Because you're still a tiebreaker in that situation.
Well, but if we did the idea where everyone votes, like individually, like, hey, like, I vote, you vote, you vote, then the votes are tallied up at the end, it's a clear winner. It's like, okay, well, that person had all the votes. And then it wasn't decided on whether or not who, I want to take away the, the idea that it gets decided on who makes the motion second first, that's what I'm trying to get rid of, yeah.
Hey, we can do whatever, but, but Mario just described like three different scenarios where that would fail. And you'd have to either revote.
Yeah, because you get, once, once the change is over, you have five council, you have no mayor pro temp, you have no mayor. So, how's that gonna work?
Well, in the, in that situation, where you, it's a council person, they come on, the vice mayor's, the mayor's, in Nathan's example, the, the mayor just comes off, the vice mayor runs the meeting, the next meeting you reorganize, yeah.
Uh, yeah, I'm not, I'm not trying to make any drastic changes. I'm just trying to make it to where the, the person that gets to vote first isn't done because someone else is quick on the gun in, in, in making a motion in a second. Because in the past, we've had times where.
It's been weaponized.
It has been weaponized, yeah, I'm just trying to get rid of that. But you can explain your option, explain what you had put in there, because your idea, I'm not against his idea, his idea is good too. I was just trying to add that in a- after that, but go ahead and explain.
What you could do also is take nominations instead of motions. So, say you had three people come up, the council can then say, well, I'd like to nominate that, you know, one of the three. And, and it doesn't start the voting at that point. It's, okay, now council, does anybody else want to nominate somebody? Okay, yeah, I want to nominate, you know, the, the first person. And then if there's no more nominations, then you know, okay, that's kind of the order that we're going in. But at least those two people and the third person who didn't get nominated, all they're not even in the running. But then you could go, okay, I know, on the first round, I know maybe, I'm gonna vote for the second person, so I'm gonna vote against. But it would be, everybody kind of who gets nominated then would get a vote until.
I'm just, I'm just trying to, I mean, I've been, I've been a sniper myself. So, I'm trying to actually make it fair, you know, I don't, I, I like, I like the idea of us being fair and open to people so that.
Same here, I just want to.
Yeah.
More, more.
I think the nomination, just if I can give my own two cents, I think the nomination at least gives you an idea as who's available to vote for. So, it's not like jumping the gun where one person goes, I have motion, I second, and then they roll call, then you get three. If you want, then at least you know, out of four candidates, there's only two people that have been nominated. And then you can go in motion in order and then people can decide, you know, okay, well, based on those two, I want this person. So, if you're the only one that wants person number one, you're not gonna get a second, right? And then the next step would be, so I, I mean, I've been involved, I think some, sometimes there is, I've seen nominations happen in another agencies. I think even, I don't even know if even COGS done stuff like that where they, where, when you got a big group, I mean, but even if you have a smaller.
Nominations.
You nominate people and then you go around and vote, but everyone at least knows who's in the pool to vote for at that point. You may go from five to two and then everyone has to be able to decide. And I would imagine, based on the process of voting, if, if the three people want number two, then they're not, they're not gonna vote for the first nomination.
No, that sounds, that sounds reasonable to me. You may still get somebody butthurt because they didn't get nominated, but.
Well, I mean, and that's, to me, that's, that's fair, I don't, I just, I'm just trying to take away the position to where that, hey, if we are quick on the gun first, I just want to take that out. Because I, it, it gets stressful with some of the folk, the people.
I think that does, because.
That's, as long as we fix that, I mean, and, and be honest with you, I'm open to whatever you guys want to do. I just put this up there to figure out if we could find a different way.
I mean, that's primarily built into it already. So, it, it's just kind of understanding that the order, I mean, yeah, we have, you know, pull them out of a hat for an interview and if they get nominated, they would go in that order. But you, I mean, however you guys want to do it, I mean, it's.
Didn't, did you have an option in here where you had something like you would, like, random someone or pull a name out of a hat or something like that?
So, yeah, so it goes, part of the, part of the issue, I can't remember the last nomination process that we had, but we had a few, few people show up and then there's always like, okay, well, who should go first, right? Like, is it just who puts in their application first or, or what? So, if you had three people show up, then you decide, okay, like, let's just put them in a hat and, or do, you know, have them choose numbers or whatever to see who goes first, just the order. And then if they happen to get, that takes out the council saying, okay, well, I'm gonna get my guy to go first, right? And then when they're all done, the nominations process happens. And if there are, say, all three of them get nominated, well, then they come up for a vote in the order that was random, that they, they came up and gave their, their spiel in the first place. So, if, if the first guy comes in and he doesn't get enough votes, then we just go on to the next one. The, in, in order that was already random. So, you can have the opportunity, you kind of know, as long as they get nominated, there's gonna be a vote on that person.
Yeah, I think that's the right way.
That sounds like the right way.
Yeah.
I, I don't know if this applies, but the restructure, you got two positions being voted on, five people up here doing their talking, it just happened to us and it turned into kind of a confusion situation. Is there a structured way that that's supposed to be done the same way?
You, you could, you could do it the same way.
That's kind of the other idea, is that I'm trying to like take some of the stress off of everybody to make it a. Could you do, maybe we can have them bring us back two options, two options. Could you bring us back two options, two clear options and we can look at them? And that way we can, one of them, what we just said right now, what, what Lonnie and them said. And then if you have another idea, bring up something else.
Do something different?
Yeah, if you want, that way we can, just because I know we, we've been here a while, it's time twenty-five. Lonnie's looking at me like, dude, we are here too long. And we still have stuff to talk about, correct? So, is everyone okay with them bringing this stuff back, redline, and we'll talk about the rest of it next time?
Yeah, I'll put it in one package for you.
All right.
And bring back the procedures too, so you guys can review those.
Perfect. We're, we're close.
But.
Okay, this is, we're, we're gonna move on to item number six point three. Discussion, direction, potential action related to imposing a vacancy tax or vacancy fee on commercial properties.
Thank you, mayor and council. This was a future agenda item requested by councilman Schindler. We've kind of done some analysis, spoken with the city attorney on options the council may have to consider. There's no action being taken tonight. We're just looking for some direction on maybe what the council would like to do moving forward. Not move forward at all, but we at least wanted to provide you some information about moving forward with some type of vacancy tax or vacancy fee on commercial properties, because there was some concerns about properties being left vacant for long periods of time, whether they're charging astronomical rates, things to entice business. properties being left vacant for long periods of time, whether they're charging astronomical rates, things to entice business, uh, uh, landlords to, you know, sell property, lease property at a reasonable rate. Um, so we looked at, uh, options, um, the vacancy taxes and fees serve as tools to address the negative impacts for prolonged, um, commercial building vacancies. Uh, the primary purpose is to reduce visible deterioration in urban blight, particularly in key business corridors. Um, policies addressed, addressing commercial vacancies differ in structure, but commonly involve either a flat fee or a scaled tax based on the size, um, assessed value or duration of the vacancy. Um, jurisdictions typically define vacant as a commercial building that remains unoccupied for a period of six to twelve, six to twelve consecutive months. I think our, our code, when it comes to like legal non-conforming kind of, it's a year. Um, to monitor and enforce these requirements that we often mandate property owners register vacant buildings, which we do. Um, enforcement mechanisms may include property inspections, documentation and marking efforts. And really what this is kinda getting to is basically identifying properties that are vacant, are blighted, are constantly a code enforcement hassle for the city. Um, we've kinda looked at some his, some background and other cities that have done this. Uh, there are several cities. Uh, a lot of them are larger cities. We saw like San Francisco, Oakland, larger, um, there's some other larger Bay Area, uh, communities that have done that, both on, uh, commercial and residential vacancies. Um, and then, and, uh, you know, surprisingly, another example was in Vancouver, British Columbia introduced an empty homes tax. Um, so these are just kind of examples of what have been done, both between commercial and, um, uh, residential. So statewide proposal, um, there is a statewide proposal, Senate Bill seven eight nine, that would impose a five dollar square foot annual tax on commercial properties vacant for a hundred and eighty-two days or more. I, I don't know the hundred and eighty-two days why that's the case. Um, the bill aims to apply broadly across office, retail, industrial and warehouse sectors, excluding residential and mixed use, um, with revenue directed, uh, uh, to the, they call it the dream for all fund, but that's, I, I think this, these are funds that can be retained by the agent, by actual cities. Um, so the pros and cons, the benefits of vacancy tax or fee all include encouraging reinvestment in vacant properties, um, increasing economic activity and generating dedicated funding for public benefit. However, they present challenges, the cost and complexity of implementing and enforcing. Additionally, some property owners may oppose the measure, uh, particularly if struggling due to economic conditions or legitimate hardships. Um, also you have the consideration of a fee and the process of implementing the fee. And then the tax, we all know the implementation process of a tax, it has to go on the ballot. So there are some challenges when trying to put that forward. Um, so we put a bunch of alternatives in here for the, for the council to, um, consider. Um, but really a lot of this was just provided, provides some type of conversation piece to allow the council to can, you know, discuss it and see if this is something that you want staff to spend more time on pursuing and looking at costs. If we have to go through a tax initiative, that's, we, we know the costs, the potential costs associated with that, um, if it's a fee and then any other alternatives that you may want us to entertain. Um, but I did kinda list a bunch of alternatives. I don't know if you want me to read through those alternatives, but, um, I know.
Mine's almost dead.
I'm interested in it, in some sort of fee to encourage this.
Okay.
And not only this, but the empty lot problem too, when people are sitting on lots and not wanting to sell them. I don't know if that could be part of this. Or if it needs to be something said.
Would that be able, would that be able to work into the properties that have been burnt, that nobody's able to contact whoever is in possession of those, the, the, the property?
Uh, yeah, but we have a couple of different mechanisms for that too already that we can do.
Is there a way we can find out how to fast track it so we're not dragging our feet for three or four years? And how we.
That's primarily code enforcement when it comes to burn, burned buildings, but if we're looking at these like vacant commercial buildings, that's kinda, I think, what the intent was from the, from councilman Schindler. Um, so we'd have to, we can look at, you guys are looking at a fee, not wanna go down the tax route. We can look more into what the fee structure would look like, what the process would be, what we'd have to do if there's a study that has to be done, what that would entail to justify charging a fee for it. And then it'd be implementing something where, you know, and then we have to monitor it too.
I think if it's somebody, let's just say that's holding a building vacant because they wanna, they wanna charge, you know, five to 10 times what the going rate is because they wanna tax write-off. I think that's different than somebody having something on the market for what it should be going for and it's sitting empty because there's nobody to rent. So you can't, I, I don't think it's fair to force somebody to rent for less than what the value is, just because the city says so. You know, if it's a, I, I understand there's some stuff that sits and people put high price tags on them because they don't wanna rent it. And I think that's what we're talking about more than just forcing people to rent something for nothing to get it filled.
Yes, we'd have to kinda see how we would establish that criteria and make a determination on what we consider, you know, market rate. So it does, um, so Mario and I can kinda look and see what that framework would look like, cause I don't know. Cause it would, I would imagine it would require some oversight from the city and kinda integration into their, you know, how they're selling it. Are they marketing it? Are they not marketing it? What kind of information may need to be provided saying, hey, you need to prove to us that you're marketing it or what is your rent? What are you requesting? So we may have to look at that and see how we handle that, to be able to enforce it, really is how, how do we enforce something?
Well, and, and the reason, one of the reasons we bring this up is cause we know, we've talked to realtors that say that stuff sits empty and they just don't wanna rent it. So that's one of the reasons that this was brought up. It wasn't just to, to charge people money. This is brought up to us as council members that, hey, this property, they know it's available and the person doesn't wanna sell it or rent it. They just wanna hold it for perpetuity or whatever.
Yeah, and I've talked to some of you guys. I know kinda the intent behind this, so it's not about a broad stroke. It's more about trying to address the habitual or the issues of certain landlords and just addressing it. So I think a lot of this is really, hey, here's the comparison between a tax and a fee. And then if it's a fee that you guys are kind of interested in not going, going down the tax route, then we can kinda see what the structure would look like for us to establish some type of fee and set some criteria, so we're not just creating this broad stroke across every commercial property in town.
Yeah, because like something, I'm gonna use example, the, the Napa building, we extended ordinance and it's just sitting there. But, you know, so that's, that's one thing that, that we need to, we need to look at that, uh, we're gonna vote on ordinance and, you know, situations or whatever it is and, you know, nothing is being done, so we need a kinda language where, hey, you know, if we're gonna extend it, you know, we're, you know, you need to do something or get an update of what's going on.
So the city of Fresno has an interesting ordinance. Now, it's not very specific. It's, it's kinda broad, so maybe we could look at it and see if we could apply it. It's, it's called, uh, the, uh, the blighted vacant building ordinance. And what they've done is they've just raised the fees through the roof. So if you're, you know, what they found is a lot of times that have vacant, people that have vacant buildings also don't take care of those buildings. And so what they've done from what I'm reading is that they've, uh, applied instead of a two hundred and fifty dollar fee, a twenty-five hundred dollar fee a day for people that have had more than three or four different violations within the same month or things of that nature.
Yeah, something like that in place.
Right, so we, I, I, I'm not saying that, that we would do something like that. I'm just saying if we could have the, you guys look at something like that because obviously the goal is to, is to spur economic growth and when we have places that are getting a better tax write-off or they're using the, the, the facility, uh, because they don't want to rent it, cause it's more beneficial that route. What, what other places have found is that that's actually harmful to the businesses around it. And it actually takes away from others. And so, um, some cities have figured ways out to try and, uh, spur this type of growth. I'm not saying this is something that we should do, especially in a broad pen, but maybe we could look at something.
Yeah.
Yeah, more of a fee-based route than the tax route. The tax route isn't something that I think we should do. It'd be more of a fee-based deal.
Yeah, the, the hard part with the fee is that it has to be supported.
Yeah.
Right? So the, I don't, I would have no idea how they're supporting a twenty-five hundred dollar a day fee.
Right.
Cause that has to go with actual costs of what the city is incurring to deal with that building. Uh, with a tax, you could set it at whatever, right?
Right.
No problem, but when we, if we wanna charge the fee, we have to relate it back to what we're actually doing as far as staff time. You know, monitoring it, compliance, whatever it is and set a rate for that, just like we set a fee for, you know, water usage. I mean, it's the same kinda thing. So that would be the limitation.
And I think, I think, I think one thing they did, I think one thing they did to incorporate this was is that they included it into fire damaged buildings. And the city, uh, from what I'm reading, I could be wrong, but they give you ninety days from the occurrence of the fire. If not, they abate it. So their abatement costs for those fees are recovered from fo- folks that are not taking care of other properties. Yeah, I'm just putting ideas out there, right? It's just like, how could they, how could they warrant the fee? They're using, you know, other tactics. I'm not saying we should do that. I'm just like giving ideas on.
So are you saying that a tax would be an easier approach?
It, it's not an easier approach. It's, it's probably a harder approach, but it gives you like, it, it gives you more of a dollar amount, right? So like the idea, I think the idea is if you have a vacant building there, you have to make the penalty high enough so that it, you decide, well, I'm, I'm not, I don't wanna pay that. I wanna rent it out or I wanna get rid of it. Right? And so, you know, uh, the fee is tough because I don't know what the fee would be, but it's not gonna, in my opinion, what the fee would be for us to monitor and do whatever we're gonna do, is probably not gonna make a dent into somebody who's sitting on a, you know, couple hundred thousand dollar piece of property, if they're just sitting on it.
Yeah.
It's, it's gonna be a couple hundred bucks a month or something like that, right?
Tie it to economic losses for the city in tax revenue. It'd, it'd be a process.
Yeah. Do this as an exercise. I mean, we need to pick a, a route and, and go for it.
Yeah, if, if the, if the tax is approved. It's, it's, it is a harder process, but I think it's, it's, cause you can't use fees as necessarily like a penalty. Like, cause they have to be justified as to actual costs. A taxes is just a tax. I mean, it's, it's not a penalty. It's just something that you have to pay when you meet the set of criteria. And so that's where you, you can, there's, there's no cost that we have to justify for that because the voters have approved it. That's just, it's the vacant, vacant building tax, you know? If you're vacant more than six months, here's what you have to pay every month, you know, ongoing. And that number, whatever the rate is, um, you know, it has to be constitutional, but it doesn't, you're not constrained like the fee. And I, and I, I would, I mean, I can't imagine the fee that we come up with is gonna be more than a couple hundred bucks a month.
Then, then I say tax. I mean, we need to do something here.
I wanna be, what do you think about that fee?
Yeah, I don't, I see it more as a code, like an enforcement mechanism, which would come with some type of penalty. It may not even be a fee. It would just be addressing it through blighted. I mean, like a lot of these are, it's, it's more else trying to address it through blight. But if it's a clean property, well-maintained, but just vacant, I, I think we can try to delve more into why the property is not being rented out or sold. Um, but if someone's just sitting on it, I, I think it's gonna be difficult to investigate that, to prove what they're doing. I know that, you know, based on some, we can see that, you know, rent maybe is super high. We can, we may be able to do an analysis to gauge whether or not that's a well above market for the area. Um, whether that's gonna hold up if they fight it or argue it and say, well, I'm not gonna pay it. And then we go to, you know, if we have to go to court or whatever.
Well, we're not just guessing at this here. Other cities are doing.
From what I could gather, I, I saw the, it's San Francisco and, uh, Oakland doing it, and I think they're both taxes. I don't think they're fees. I couldn't find a whole lot related to fees.
And Fresno is doing it. They have a, a, but it's not just for commercial and how they're getting, and, and they are doing it. They're taking buildings from people that are not taking care of them and they are retrofitting them into apartments. And so like, if we wanted to look at this in a, in a broad stroke and we wanted to make that, we could say, hey, you know what? Two burned properties, you didn't fix them in ninety days, we're gonna abate them. So what this does is one, if we abate those properties, we get them fixed. Two, the companies that refuse to move on, uh, on renting out their properties, that's where this fee applies and says, hey, you guys are not doing what you're supposed to. How can we warrant this type of fee? Well, because it's part of the abatement program.
Yeah, and that, and that's, I think it's a little bit different process because that is part of the abatement process. We have that in place now for burned down buildings. So we, we can go through and that's why we've recently updated our budget, so we can afford to abate the properties, cause before we weren't abating them because we couldn't afford to abate them. But, but for the, but I think from what councilman Schindler is alluding to is the vacant prop, I mean, we're talking, we have to look at a property that's in perfectly good condition. That's vacant. I mean, perfect example, you know, is, you know, properties that are well-maintained, but they're empty because they may, the landlord maybe be charging too much for rent or they're not wanting to sell it. It's staying vacant, but they're not actively trying to sell it. That's, I think, where the abatement process doesn't necessarily go because it's not blighted. Um, unless we can make some other correlation as to why we would want to actually, uh, abate a property that's in perfectly good shape, other than just being vacant.
Well, I mean, what, whatever we can, uh, figure out to do when a good path, I mean, we have half of our town downtown vacant. It's been since that way for the last five, six years. We've had, uh, the main street, at least three businesses in a row, like sitting on main street, boom, 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 they're all done. Right? And so we're turning into a ghost town. Right, and we have, and so we, I mean, I don't, like, and we have the public complaining. They're saying, hey, like, you know, you guys need to do something, right? And so, um, this is just out of the box thinking, you know, it's not like, any, anyone listening, this isn't like something we've decided. We're just trying to figure out how to address the issues that you guys bring forward, like how do we address those issues? It's not that we're not going out to every event possible and trying to bring people in and try and incentivize them, cause we are. We're bringing, we're doing everything we can. We paying two different lobbyists.
Problems doing that with having properties to offer because they don't wanna sell them. Sitting vacant. So, you know, these are, these are issues that are holding up.
We infringe on people's personal rights to be able to not sell property.
Just saying, we'll try to encourage growth somehow.
Yeah.
So.
Well, I mean, if, if, if growth is imminent and there's interest in development, the vacant properties, you know, I would imagine would sell if there, if there's development. Uh, that's why we, you know, we definitely enforce it from a weed abatement standpoint, making sure they keep their lots clean. That's just part of normal code enforcement. But putting additional burden on, you know, on a vacant lot that, you know, may or may not develop right away, it won't automatically spur development. Um, so I think we gotta kinda balance that too and look at, you know, even if we keep it, if we start putting a heavy tax on someone, cause it's vacant. I mean, I think if a developer came in and wanted to sell, there may be some people that want too much, right? Those are tricky situations and we're getting involved in kind of people's own value. Some people think their, their property is worth a lot more than, uh, the actual value. That's up to a real estate agent to try to convince the buyer to try and say, hey, you know, you're not gonna get more than what this guy's offering you or gal's offering you. But I think that.
We have some of these properties that have been sitting there for thirty years though. They have no intention in selling. They're land blocking their property to make, to hold it because they just wanna hold it. We have places like that and that's, that's not.
I, I, I think a lot of, I think a lot of people are holding on to their property because they know Kling is gonna grow and it's gonna be worth some money. So we attack it by doing the, um, the code enforcement way and we're already working on that, but we need to make it to where we can make our town, uh, look good for business to come in. And as, as we start getting new business in here, you know, hopefully these people sell or rent. Um, but they have to be taking care of their property when it's sitting there empty for sure, cause.
I think, and I think that's where the focus should probably be is, you know, kinda from what your original comment was about addressing the vacant commercial properties where we're seeing, or if we can actually prove that they're being, they're, they're basically keeping rent high. Like property that's available for rent, that's just at a rate that's like far exceeding what, what they should be charging. I think that's really kinda where the original focus was. I think other things can be handled through code enforcement. We're working on the beautification efforts. Those types of things, we're gonna be hitting hard. Um, we're already working on that, on that side. But when it comes to that focus, I think that's really kinda what I wanna narrow it down and maybe we can try and find some way to enforce that part of it. A fee of some sort, or I, I just don't know how we'll be able to prove that.
Maybe a business improvement district for the downtown. That might, that might be an option where we could adjust the fees depending on, on the structure.
Okay. But if we wanna narrow it to that.
It would be focused on the downtown.
We can, we can definitely explore some ideas and bring them back.
Cause I believe, I believe like Cobre Beach, Pismo, they all have ordinance like that. I think signs were, it's.
Oh, there, we, there's a bunch all over the valley.
Exactly. And, and something like that, we could start, especially, I mean, we have to find out where all these stars, when, 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 when somebody comes in, when somebody comes in and says they wanna open up a business and we're like, oh, it's great, but then nothing happens. And then, yes, and then we're blindsided by somebody that like, hey, you know, what's this business coming in? We didn't even have no idea or staff didn't have idea or, you know. you know, what's this business coming in? We didn't even have no idea or staff didn't have idea or, you know, we can't respond to the right answers. So I, I think something like that, you know, would work.
Well, and I want to make sure that we are take, that we take everything into consideration, you know, like, like, uh, Councilman Hedges said, we, we're not trying to, um, you know, take away people's ability to prosper, obviously, even in the long run. But we do need to make sure that the town, uh, can grow and, you know, how we do that, this is just ideas, right? How we figure out how to do that, you know?
Let us bring back some, we'll bring back some ideas on what could be, well, how we could make, entice those types of, uh, properties to at least be competitive. Let's do that.
Well, and you got something coming back next month on the cleanliness for the town.
We're working on it. I'm hoping.
I know. I saw it. Supposed to be back in August. That's next month.
Is that what it said? Yeah. Oh, yeah. Second meeting.
All right. So you guys have direction on that? All right. We are going to move on to, this is an interesting one.
Okay. Done. Good. Okay. Go ahead. That was, that was, that's, go ahead. I'll let you introduce the item, please.
Council consideration of project scope costs and council selection of tree well color for Elm Avenue's tree well replacement project.
And I only brought this forward because I didn't know if the council want to get creative on local colors, community pride. You want to do some orange? We did red and black combined in front of the, uh, fire department. Um, so, but we can go with brown if we're going to be on the main corridor, if you want to go with brown. Same thing that we did on Seventh Street, but behind Chevron. You go blue if you want. Yeah. No, I wanted to kind of get your guys' input. We could do blue. We can do a combination of blue every other and do brown on another one. We can do that. I just wanted to, I just kind of wanted to get your guys' take on it because the vendors could be, end up being different and, um.
What about doing, what about doing blue and every other one being gray? Still the city colors.
You could do blue and gray. Yeah, we could do blue and gray. I think there's a blue. I just thought it's a, it's a fun project to really clean up the downtown area because it's going to really eliminate a lot of the weeds. There's multiple ones on there that I got you guys because there's multiple vendors that could be chosen, but they're just comparable colors. So if we just find a color that might be comparable, you guys can go with that.
So no blue, just gray.
There's not.
And redwood, which was just pretty much red and black, right? Yeah, there's no blue.
Oh, I pulled up the wrong one. There's got to be a blue.
Not on any of these, yeah.
All the colors in there? Riverway, who's that?
Things we need to keep in mind when we're going to have a vision for the, like, new city. My black is already, already too hot here.
Yeah. So it looks like it would be, uh, so probably a brown of some sort. It'll blend in a little bit more.
See, there's a brown in tan. Can you check to see what other, other colors that we can actually?
These are all the vendors that, these are, these are a lot of the primary vendors, yeah, that, that are going to be chosen. So yeah, you're going to be either probably go with like, because I think we did like a redwood and, and, um, black with the fire department. But we can go with, I think, just like a cypress, like a brown or something like that might be good. Be more neutral.
Cypress and gray, just.
There's a granite. It's like a gray color. If you, if you want some a little bit brighter.
Just where it's not too dark because it's already hot enough.
Yeah.
You can go the gray, light gray would look okay. It'd blend in with the sidewalk a little bit more. It's ADA accessible. It's ADA compliant too. So.
Brown in tan.
Yeah, I just, I would think we want to keep some cohesive color scheme around if we want our town.
Yeah. That's one reason why I wanted to ask because I didn't want to like start changing it up. But I mean, brown, we have brown on Seventh Street now. So if you guys want to stick with that same way, we could probably stay with the same color. That's on Seventh. Make it.
Yeah, those actually turned out pretty nice.
Okay.
All right. So brown, moving forward with it.
And then you're approving a, you're approving a budget too for it, to get this done.
And, uh, where's this money coming from? This is from the measure C flexible funding?
Yeah. Measure C flex.
Okay. Can I entertain a motion? We have further discussion.
And this is for 152 wells, well boxes.
Yes. All the way from Seventh, all the way to, I think, First Street.
This is including, uh, removal of.
It's 90, I'm sorry. It's 90, 94 tree wells.
94?
94. Seventh of NS.
Okay. Eventually is there going to be more than?
As soon as we build more tree wells, then we will. Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
So, so what this is saying, it's, it says on the top of ours that it's for 152 wells. So we need to change that and is that number four?
This is 94. It says removal of 58 metal grates and then which we'll remove. And then the preparation and replacement of 94 tree wells.
Total of 152 tree wells from Tri-City.
That's on the cost estimate.
Cause if the number is different, we don't have the correct number.
Let's see. Well, you can tell based on the square footage. So the square footage of the actual porous pavement is 1,246. And the staff report says 1,250. So it's going to be the 94. I mean, it's going to be the 150. It'll be the, the total amount along that stretch.
Okay. So it's, okay.
I guess I couldn't tell you 100. Oh, it's 94. 94 because it's on the plans is 94. So 152 may have been a different, um, they must have not changed that number. So everything correlates to 94. Cause the plans that are in there are 94. Yes, that amount is correct because the nut, the actual square footage, if you look on the square footage of the porous material, it's 1246. In the, on the construction bid items and on the staff report, it identifies 1250. It's like right out, right at this, almost the same. So the staff, it's all measure C funds.
So I'll make him, I'll make a motion to move forward with this.
Okay.
No second.
It's moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Passes. All right. With that, we're going to move to announcements. Council announcements. Anyone?
Oh, I just want to, um, thank once again inner staff and city, uh, police department, fire department for everything they've been doing. I know it's been hot. I know with part, fourth of July fires, everything, um, maybe in the future we can get another fire truck like that. You know, um, yeah, I mean, you know, um, police is doing great. You know, I'm glad you guys catching people out there stealing and everything. Um, there was an individual that just drove from, I think, uh, I believe, I think Oregon was going to Arkansas. I don't know what police officer, but guided him, you know, say, hey, you're, you're good here, you know? And he was very proud. He just didn't think that Kalinga was California. That's straight words that he said. I don't believe this town is California because everybody was real helpful. Mechanics, you know, shot, bought auto body shop, um, let him fix his car there. He had no problems. I think he went to a machine shop. Yeah. And he was very pleased. He just couldn't believe it. And out of his whole trip, he had so many struggles and he was able to get on his way and was very happy. So, you know, everybody thinks. And, you know, I just want to say that also to the community, please, uh, you know, I challenge you to come to our city council meeting. So you guys could understand the process and that we are trying our best to put more businesses here, trying to get everything going. I know our, our town is expanding, but you know, there is, you know, um, bumps. Um, so, but you know, it's a challenge that, you know, so you guys could get their inner, the, the inner show to, to what's really happening and, and with the staff and everybody, what great job you guys are doing. So I'm just happy that I could be here and, you know, so, so, yeah.
Any other from council? Yeah. Go for it. Shouldn't, but I can. Any, uh, city managers announcements?
I said a couple. I'll make them brief. Um, just a reminder, national night out on Tuesday, August 5th from 5:30 to eight. And just an update, we received the, uh, plans for the new Sinclair gas station at Fifth and Elm today. So there. Just want to give you guys an update. So you know, we got them, we got the plans in. So Robert will be getting those processed and over to our plan checkers.
So I just want to thank council because I know this is a long meeting. You guys called it ahead of time. You knew it was going to be a long one. Apologize. And we're not done. Just so the public knows, it's 10 o'clock and we're not done. And I want to thank, uh, the staff for being here with us. I know this is a long meeting. I apologize. Um, and then I'll open it up. Uh, city treasury, you have any, uh, announcements or comments?
I just wanted Sean to give us a quick update on the air show.
Um, it's September 27th and.
I mean, I know you were looking for sponsors and stuff.
Yeah. So we've, we've solicited a lot of sponsors. We've, we've received some interest, um, couple committed. Um, we did have a big planning meeting today to go over a lot of things. And so we're pretty encouraged by the progress so far. Um, we'll be hammering out vendors. We've got a good flight. We got a good performer lineup. Uh, we just secured a few more contracts today, which was nice. And so we're continuing to hammer through it. So, but I hope we see everyone out there. Tickets will hopefully go on sale, uh, cross our fingers, August 1st.
Excellent. All right. That being said, no more announcements. Uh, looks like about two till 10. Oh yeah. I mean, I'm trying to get us out of here. Do we have future agenda items?
I don't have future, just an update on, uh, speed bumps, the speed bump, uh, we're going to get. The hump speed bump, the one that we were, the city was supposed to buy.
Oh, there, I think it wasn't on, it's not, it was, they haven't been ordered yet. I think Eric's been working on it, but I think we have them ordered. Yeah, we'll get them ordered.
Information on agenda. All right.
I'll update you guys.
Any other future gen items? No. That being said, it's, uh, about two till 10, uh, meeting adjourned.